Good evening, everybody out here present and for those in the virtual world. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 19th, 2021, beginning at 7:05 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via electronic means consistent with the Texas Opens Meeting Act and the Governor's Disaster Proclamations related to COVID-19 through proclamations, executive orders, and suspensions of Texas law. At least a quorum of the board will be participating in person, by video conference or telephone conference, in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Sarah McMuller in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. You may be speaking.
If everyone would please silence your phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Next on the agenda, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And tonight, I'd like for the board to consider the ratification of the administrative appointments for PTEC Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Assistant Principal for Atherton Elementary, Assistant Principal for Blanton Elementary, and Assistant Principals for Peach Elementary, as discussed in closed session.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Member for approval?
Okay. Second, I've got a motion by Mr. Hogg, and second by Dr. Rice. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. When you are allowed, please vote. Oh, well, Justin, thank you very much for joining us out of town for your job. We appreciate you being here virtually. So at this time, we are going to vote, but we are going to vote by roll call, raise of hand, one at a time. I will not call your name like I usually do, just to speed things up. So, Dr. Rice, we will start with you.
(Inaudible).
And for the record, can you state?
I vote yes.
Keesha Mays, vote yes.
Sarah McMuller, yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Yes.
All present vote in the affirmative. The motion passes. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And as customary, you'll see, hopefully you'll see them on the slide here. We have our PTEC Assistant Principal for Lamar High School, Carolyn Longoria, and most recently, she was the Assistant Principal at Lamar High School. The Assistant Principal for Atherton Elementary is Ricardo Butler, and most recently was the Assistant Principal at Adams Elementary. We have an Assistant Principal for Blanton Elementary, Dr. Toya Curry, most recently the Dean of Blanton Elementary School. And we have an Assistant Principal at Peach Elementary, Amelia Alonso, and she's coming to us from Birdville ISD with a variety of teaching experiences you see on the screen. And the other Assistant Principal for Peach Elementary is Ashley West, and she was most recently the counselor at Peach Elementary. So congratulations to our most recent appointed administrators, and I thank them for their service.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. And congratulations and welcome, although you've already been participating in the classroom. So next on our agenda is our public hearing. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary LBENJAMI@AISD no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Ma'am, yes, ma'am. We have a list of speakers signed up for this evening.
Okay. So I'm going to read, and this will be applicable for everyone who comes up and speaks, so I'll just say it this time unless you ask me to repeat it, otherwise I'll just say it once. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and when you hear the bell, if you would please stop your discussion at that time. I would also ask that anyone who comes to speak, we're giving you this opportunity to speak to us to listen to you, so please do not play any recordings or videos instead of speaking. If you do have any recordings or videos that you would like for us to review, please send it to LBENJAMI@AISD, and it will be shared with each board member. I'm going to call everyone up in orders of three, so when I call your name, please come to the stand to speak. Your time will start. I'm going to call three people, if the other two would at least come forward and kind of sit down to the front to make sure that everybody gets a chance to continue talking and speaking, okay? So the first three on my list is Kim Worley, Stephanie Bangs, and LaRae Stanford. And if you would speak in that order, please.
It appears some of our faithful, honest school board members are looking to make the 21-22 year completely uncomfortable for thousands of AISD students, teachers, and families because they are suddenly scared of the virus. Last week, when I spoke to you, only two of you were masked, and the president wore her mask as a chin strap, so it definitely appears that the fear of the Delta variant was raging amongst you. There's no social distancing, no COVID protocols, or an abundance of Lysol or hand sanitizer. One school board member who is scared of the virus touched his mask no less than 10 or 15 times. Don't you realize that every time he touches it, it's now cross-contaminated? So in order to prevent that spread of the virus, you have to replace that mask every single time you touch it. Are you going to give them out from a sterile box? How do we know that they're not already contaminated? To my fellow peers here today, watching online and the school board members sitting in front of me, we see a lot of hypocrisy and power-hungry people trying to force an agenda on us. You want us to conform, and according to Governor Abbott, we don't have to. The thought of AISD using taxpayer funds to sue their government because they don't want to follow the rules set in place is absolutely disgusting. Look at these pictures from throughout this summer. There's no masks. Rules for thee but not for me, is what we see. You're not afraid of a virus, you're afraid of losing power and control. The virus isn't the problem, adults are, and you are failing our kids. I'm just curious, are you going to discipline students, teachers, and parents who don't comply? To those of you who want to abuse your power, you don't have authority to do so. You don't have the legal authority to create a law or a mandate. Shame on you for not upholding your oath to the Constitution. Shame on you for being complicit in child abuse, which according to TEA guidelines, covering a child's face is abuse.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. (Applause). Ms. Bangs? Okay, your time starts now.
Okay. Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you, as board members, will listen to all of your constituents before making your decision. My name is Dr. Stephanie Bangs, and I have a fifth grader and an eighth grader in the AISD. I come today asking that you continue with your original guidance for COVID-19 and continue to give us a choice for our children. COVID-19 is not going anywhere, and it will continue to mutate, such is the nature of a virus. We will see a rise in cases, but at this point, not much has changed and does not warrant a complete turnover of your guidelines. Have you worn a mask for eight hours a day? I have. And let me tell you about the jaw pain I developed that required muscle relaxers, the fatigue, the brain fog, and the fungus that grew on my face. My belief is we have to let our immune systems adapt to this virus, whether that be vaccination or unfortunately contracting the virus or being exposed. Kids have been isolated for the last 18 months. Their immune systems haven't had to fight off as much illness. They are in a weakened condition, but it will grow stronger as we are around more viruses. We should continue to be given our choice for what is best for our families. You can offer a virtual option for those that want this, mask or not mask. The district can provide a virtual, or there are online charter schools through the state people can look into. This is America, and that's what we enjoy about our country. These accommodations that you approved with very little concern just two weeks ago accommodate the most families. Since you were elected and took an oath to follow the laws of the state, I ask that you please follow your oath. Thank you.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Okay, you may start.
Two of my students, two of my children, I used to be a school bus driver, attend AISD. Masks, the infamous piece of cotton that protects us from the most deadly virus ever seen, you see them everywhere these days, marketing ads, TV, in caps at the grocery store, by the register at a gas station, in every parking lot across the city, you'll find at least one or two or more dirty masks on the ground. If this virus is so deadly and masks are so helpful, why aren't they picked up and put in hazardous bins? Let's be honest with ourselves for a minute. Ask yourself, do you really think the mask is going to protect you? No. Two feet away from a COVID person at my job, didn't catch it. Why? I keep myself healthy. I keep my kids healthy. It's our choice in our home as free Americans. Masks don't work, and the harmful effects that they have on our children are truly unknown. How dare you subject my children to such physical and emotional harm? You have no idea what this has caused our children. How dare such physical, emotional harm? How dare you mentally and physically abuse my children? And according to Texas Education Agency, that is exactly what you're doing, is covering a child's mouth with an object. CPS considers it child abuse. In a 2020 study by Sensendorf, the 3M manufacturer writes that they do not offer masks for children in some countries because they are designed for adults, and that the misuse of masks can result in illness or death. Now, people and especially children have to wear masks without knowing that the breathing resistance is an important component of the health hazard. This is not known in the case of most community masks. Even when asked at the German Federal Press Conference, no scientist, no sign... (bell) I am for American freedom. Don't say "freedom".
So the next three names I will call is Anthony Price, Jayden Price, and Wimberly Mills. If you would please approach the podium, please.
(Inaudible).
Okay. Okay, only ones come down. You can go ahead and approach the podium. Just state your name.
Wimberly Mills.
Thank you.
Freedom of choice, that's what I support. Everyone should be allowed to choose what is best for their families. Am I for people wearing masks? Yes, if that's your choice. Am I for people not wearing masks? Yes, if that's your choice. When we take away personal choices, decisions, and responsibilities, what have we become as a community? When we knowingly act, encourage, and promote defiance of orders, what does this slippery slope lead to? We want our students to listen to us and obey us, yet we are encouraging the exact opposite if we choose not to obey Governor Abbott's order. Also, I am the school nurse of an AISD elementary school, and I have seen firsthand how these students wear these masks. They're dirty, they're germy, they're broken on purpose by students who don't want to wear them, and they're worn incorrectly 90% of the time. Teachers spent a lot of time last year correcting improper mask-wearing when they should have been teaching. In addition, when we, as nurses, had to contact trace last year, which was a nightmare, by the way, and produced very little benefit, we were instructed to consider only two things: distance and time. Distance and time, not masks. Masks did not matter. Finally, in the last week, several school districts have taught our children that if you're scared enough, you can pick and choose which laws or regulations or Supreme Court orders you want to follow. I hope that after discussions with your legal counsel, the board will learn, or maybe has already learned, that you don't have the ability to require masks. You just don't. But if you haven't learned this, I will decide what I need to do if you elect to institute a mask mandate, as I will not participate in your illegal activity. I am a U.S. Officer Army veteran. I took and followed orders that my commanding officers gave me while in the military. Governor Abbott is now my commanding officer, and I will not disobey him. We have a state law that says there's no mask mandate, and any school board member that votes to break the law should be removed under the Texas Local Government Code. Thank you.
(Applause). So is Anthony Price or Jayden Price present and/or maybe on virtual?
No.
Okay. Jeanette Owens, Holly Torres, and Pamela German. Ms. Owens?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm a kindergarten teacher in AISD starting my 10th year. As a kindergarten teacher, I was thrilled to be able to begin the year of school with choice on masking because I was able to welcome my kindergartners with a smile. A smile that gave a sense of comfort that words never will. I was able to model how to shape your mouth to make sounds. I was able to scaffold by counting sequence as they counted along, and best of all, I was able to see those snaggletooth grins again. Then I heard that AISD was considering legal action against the governor. I was frustrated. I was frustrated that as a teacher, while teachers across the district were spending hundreds of dollars out of our own pockets to get the classroom ready, the school board had enough money of our tax dollars to consider a lawsuit. A lawsuit based on the premise that we're not willing to let parents make a personal choice for their child. The idea of masking these babies for another year is concerning. We tend to forget that school's about learning social skills as well as academics. Reading facial cues and seeing smiles are a huge emotional need for students. What are we, what are we doing to these kids later down the line? As a teacher, I'm confused why we're pushing mandated masks when we all saw how effectively students were wearing them last year. They were never worn correctly. They were put over their mouths, they were used to wipe their nose, they were covered with their lunch, they fell on the ground, and by the end of the day, they were exposing them to more germs than what they were supposed to be protecting against. I understand that we're hoping to mitigate risk, but life is full of risk. I also sympathize with fear and the need to do something to protect our children, but the beauty of the governor's order and AISD's current stance doesn't forbid that. It allows freedom of choice. I will leave you with this. As a teacher, my own son was starting kindergarten this year, and he has been so forward, looking forward to coming to mommy's school. However, when I heard the school board would rather consider legal action against the governor than allow his mother the decision of what medical choices are best for him, I withdrew him.
Is Pamela German present or online? Okay. We have Ms. Torres virtual. Pamela, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Pamela?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You may start speaking. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. My name is Pamela. I'm the parent of a fifth grader who this Monday attended an AISD school for his first time ever. We are both really excited for the school year, but very, very concerned about the lack of protection for our children too young to get their vaccines. Due to the governor's order blocking mask mandates and other measures to mitigate the spread of the virus in our local jurisdictions, cases statewide are rapidly climbing. Even the governor himself has tested positive, and he announced so mere hours after a large in-person gathering where most people chose to be maskless. As COVID-19 infects others exponentially, the viral spread from that event is yet to be seen. Asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic people account for more than half of transmission of the virus. At this time, there are no pediatric ICU beds available in North Texas. The virus is running rampant through our children as schools across the state open up with full classrooms and no mask mandates. I want my child to be able to receive an in-person education safely, and the governor's order prohibits my child and others from being able to learn in a safe environment. Every day, innumerable parents walk up to the building unmasked and in close contact with our children. Without being able to enforce a mask mandate, unmasked parents are posing a huge risk to our kids under the age of 12. If it's a hardship for you to wear a mask, please don't force our kids, who have no choice other than in-person instruction at this time, to come face-to-face with you. In addition to my concern for my asthmatic 10-year-old being exposed by one of the many maskless parents walking up to the school every single day, I'm also concerned about him bringing home the virus to my mom, who's high-risk. She's still going through testing of her heart to make sure it's safe for her to take her vaccine. So many cases could be prevented and lives saved by allowing our local jurisdictions to make the decisions best for the community. The governor's order is endangering our children and our communities. I believe we need to move forward with the...
And nobody else was yelling while y'all are speaking. Okay, your time is up. Thank you very much. Now, I'm not going to try to speak over you, so give me an opportunity to speak, and then I will be glad to make sure everybody speaks the same amount of time. That's all I'm asking. Okay. So we've got Sarah Fischoltz, Scott Hanea, and Relex Griffin. So Holly Torres? I called your name previously. Are you here? There we go. Ms. Torres, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I can hear you. You may start speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to express my concern with the district's current return to school COVID-19 protocols. Currently, I do not have confidence that my son, along with other students, will be safe given the district's latest protocols. My 10-year-old son went to school on Monday. He's a fifth grader, and so he's not eligible for the vaccine. I received a call around 1:30 that he had been in contact on Saturday with someone who tested positive for COVID on Monday. I immediately went to the school to pick him up to lessen any potential exposure. Fortunately, he is not showing any symptoms, and today he did test negative. But my concern is that upon talking with the school nurse, I discovered that per AISD protocol, he could have returned on Tuesday, the next day, if he had shown symptoms, which fortunately he doesn't have any symptoms. But I don't understand why he would have been able to go back to school if he potentially could have COVID. And it's my understanding that a parent could have COVID and their child could go to school if they are not showing any symptoms. Whenever I talked to my pediatrician's office, they were shocked to learn that he could have gone back because they told me that he needed at least a 14-day quarantine if he's not getting tested or if he tests positive. And I pulled up the TEA Public Health Guidance, and their protocol is 10 days, and so I don't understand why the school district would allow a student to go back to school if they've been exposed to somebody with COVID. I really think the mask will help. I'm concerned because my son's classroom teachers are not wearing a mask, which could potentially, if they are sick with COVID, could potentially spread it to other students.
Your time has expended, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll recall my next two names. Sarah Fischoltz, Scott Hanea, and Relex Griffin.
(Inaudible).
Okay. Sarah, are you there? Frank, do we have Sarah? Okay, give a few seconds. Sarah, if you can hear me, go ahead and say hello, so I know that we have you. Frank, is he there? Is she there? Okay. Sarah, can you hear me? Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you. You can start speaking now.
Okay, perfect. This is my first time being involved in anything like this, so I just kind of wanted to go through some concerns that I had as a mom to a third grader. I'm concerned with AISD's COVID-19 protocol, or lack thereof, I would say. My daughter completed second grade completely virtually. However, I understand that funding has been cut this year for virtual learning despite taxpayers paying into local school property taxes. I just believe that the decision to defund virtual learning was made prematurely and places children, my child specifically, at risk, and I'm just a bit concerned about that. For the 21-22 school year, my kids essentially forced back into school, and the school seems to be functioning just as it was, business as usual, pre-COVID. Of course, schools, not with our school, not mandating masks with Abbott's executive orders, of concern. I take issue with. If parents and students are being given the choice as to whether or not they will wear a mask, I'm of the mindset that parents and students should also have that same option to go to school virtually, since we essentially have no choice over what's going on with the peers or teachers. But so long as virtual learning is not an option at AISD, I would just expect to see more precautions to be taken, considering that kids 12 and under can't be vaccinated. Whenever I've been going into the school for the first three days, just kind of see how things are going, and there's just no efforts being made to distance the kids. All of the kids are back in school. And just in what I observe from the breakfast line, you know, the kids go through the line. Every kid has to touch a keypad to enter in their school lunch number.
Thank you. Your time is over.
Then the kids are chaperoned over to a table to sit down and eat.
Thank you. Your time to speak is expended. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you for your time. I'm here tonight to express my support for legal action against Governor Abbott's executive order regarding masks, and also voice my support for the virtual learning option. Just today, Dallas ISD announced that they will be offering a 90-day virtual program for children 11 years and under. I would love for AISD to come up with something similar to that, so that parents have more choices. My son just started second grade at AISD, and he was a virtual student from the end of kindergarten all the way through almost the end of first grade. He came back the last couple of months when things seemed to be a little bit more clear. And he really, he loves being in the classroom, but he also thrives virtually. You know, he completes his lessons, and he also learns about time management and personal responsibility, so I think virtual can be just as effective as in the classroom if you're willing to offer it. And when he finally did return to school, he didn't have any problem wearing a mask because he understood that it wasn't there just to protect him, it was there to protect other kids and other students. And, you know, he's seven years old, and he understands that. The discussion about how schools should respond to this crisis has grown both political and contentious, but it really shouldn't be any of these things, and it also shouldn't even really be an emotional issue if we just follow the facts and the science. And here's what the facts and the science tell us. Forty children a day in Texas are currently being hospitalized with COVID. A surge of RSV cases has added fuel to the fire, and just last week, North Texas completely ran out of pediatric ICU beds. Within the last week, four school districts in Texas have closed because of COVID outbreaks. Texas is currently ranked second for the largest number of pediatric COVID cases in the U.S., behind Florida. Already, in the first four days of AISD school, there are 187 active cases, based on the last time I looked at the dashboard. The CDC says... The CDC says that masks are necessary to help prevent the spread of the Delta variant, which is twice as contagious as previous variants. I ask you respectfully, board members, to let the science and the facts, not emotions, guide you in your decision-making. Thank you for your time and for all you're doing to keep our children safe.
Okay, so I've got a Relex Griffin, Rebecca Rogers, and Greg Hart. Are any of those present? Okay. Mr. Griffin? Okay, are you Rebecca? Yes, please.
My name is Rebecca, and I'm here to speak against the forced and unconstitutional mask mandates, the case through six virtual learning, and the lawsuit being paid by tax dollars that are being considered today. Attempting to call, I believe that the emergency meeting that you guys attempted to call last week and then canceled was done underhandedly to keep people from attending and speaking out against this abuse of power. The method that you are employing is deceptive, and it needs to stop. My rights and my children's rights do not end where someone's fear begins. God doesn't give us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and sound mind. I would like to remind you again that our Constitution was founded on the principles of freedom, of liberty, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I believe that many of you need to pick up a copy and reread and re-educate yourself on our constitutional rights. You took an oath to uphold those constitutional values. When an organization or government entity oversteps those boundaries, they are choosing to take away those personal liberties, not only violating the Constitution, but also violating the basic civil rights. Again, they are choosing to discriminate one group of individuals versus another group. Masks don't work, and there are 47 studies that confirm the ineffectiveness of masks for COVID, and 32 more confirmed their negative health effects. I've just printed out every single one of those for you to look at. Since our officials appear to be too busy to actually look at both sides of the data being published, I am providing you an extensive copy for you. The surge that you are seeing in hospitals is those that have been mostly vaccinated or have RSV. I looked for the data for Tarrant County and was able to locate that data, but I found the data for Dallas County on August 6th. From their data, I can conclude that Tarrant County is similar in nature. In Dallas County, there has been 12.1 million cases.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg?
Dr. Cavassos, President Mays, other board members, my name is Greg Hart. I teach elementary music here in Arlington. I appreciate your attention tonight. I respect that there are very passionate people on both sides of the mask debate, and pray that you will listen to all of us with an open mind and keen interest in identifying the facts. I do not envy the position you have been placed in during the last 18 months. I fully understand that your hands have frequently been tied by Greg Abbott, Ken Paxton, and TEA as they refuse to allow local control. When this pandemic began, you stated that the safety of students and staff was a priority. As you decide tonight about pursuing an avenue to implement steps to help mitigate the spread of COVID, I want to leave you with a few firsthand observations and thoughts. The AISD website had 328 teaching jobs posted as of 8/17. While I doubt we currently have that many jobs open, I know we have several teaching jobs available on my campus. Have you stopped to consider that we have so many openings because teachers are tired of politics trumping public health? As a specialist teacher, I see approximately 640 students in my classroom every four days. They represent 160 students a day that come through my classroom with no precautions in place. These classes are scheduled back-to-back with no time to sanitize, disinfect, or clean between groups. There are five people on my team. Between the five of us, we had 87 absences last year. Of these absences, 87% of them did not have a substitute pick-up. In all fairness, we had safety protocols in place last year when I collected this data, but it raises the question why adults are not coming to our campus. There is no doubt that students all over the world did not make the same academic gains last year. Why wouldn't you want to do everything possible to help keep these students in the classroom and schools open? I'm a facts person, so I acknowledge there are claims that masks work and claims they do not. The question you must answer is, who do you believe? Why do you think more than 100 local physicians signed a letter to Fort Worth ISD asking them a mask? Why do you think most of the medical professionals are encouraging masks endorsed? As much as I hate wearing a mask and not being able to see my students.
Your time is expended.
Before you vote, ask yourself if you're right.
Okay, I will call one more time for Relex Griffin. Okay. So next three, Kim Martinez, Christina Salinas, and Robert Bueker.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. I am here tonight as a parent of a high school child and an educator. I work in AISD. I teach pre-K. And my four-year-olds are less whiny about wearing a mask than the people in this room. It's quite shocking, really. I mean, I had my four-year-olds last year. I had, you know, some of them struggled with it a little, but others did not at all. And the same goes for this year. I really implore you to look at the facts, look at the data, follow the science and the doctor's recommendations, and join the lawsuit against Governor Abbott for tying your hands regarding the masks. I also would like to ask for a virtual option for kids that are too young to be vaccinated. But also, speaking of high schools, I would like to ask you to please limit in-person assemblies and do things like that because they're just mixing up kids and they're all exposing to one another, you know, and I just don't think that's a good idea. We need to control what we can control. We need to stop having in-person staff meetings because they can be done in Zoom just as effectively as in-person. We need to go back to contact tracing. We need to do some of those early protocols. I bragged on you guys all of last year that, oh, they are acting with the abundance of caution. They are keeping us safe. They are doing what they can. And then this year, it all went out the window when we're in a worse situation than we were before. So I would really ask you to reinstate contact tracing, reinstate temperature checks, reinstate health surveys, because our kids are getting sick. The first week of school, we've already had at least five cases just on my campus. And in addition, we should not punish teachers who want to do the right thing and go get a COVID test when they're experiencing symptoms and know they've been exposed, like I had to do today. I had to take a half a personal day just to get a COVID test.
Your time is expended. Thank you.
Christina?
Yes. Good evening. I'm the parent of a third grader, and I just wanted first to commend AISD for the COVID protocols that you put in place last year to protect students and staff from the virus. During the last academic year, AISD touted all the measures it was taking to make the classroom safe for students. These measures included universal mask-wearing, social distancing, and limiting kids' interactions outside of their classroom pods. With these measures in place and with reduced in-person attendance because many kids were attending virtually, AISD was able to keep the COVID numbers down. Now, this school year, we have many more children in the classroom, which presents a challenge to implement the safety measures from last year. Considering the catastrophic COVID numbers we are experiencing in North Texas right now, AISD should be taking every possible step to limit the spread of COVID in the schools. The most important piece is universal mask-wearing, which will only happen if it is mandated. Kids will only follow the example that teachers and staff set. I have an eight-year-old daughter, as I mentioned, who is enrolled in AISD. I am trying to balance protecting her physical health with ensuring her emotional well-being. And I know that going back to the classroom is best for her. It's the best learning environment for her, and that's what I want. So I desperately want her to go back to the classroom, but I need to know that Arlington ISD has my back and is doing everything possible to protect her and the thousands of other children in the district that are in the same position. I urge the board to implement a mask mandate and make sure that it is strictly enforced.
Okay, Robert?
My name is Robert Bueker. Seven questions I want to ask. If the district is really concerned, why are temperature checks not in place? Why is there such a shortage of janitorial staff because the district pays $12 an hour with no benefits? If the district is concerned, then why aren't they hiring contract services to disinfect the schools daily? Why is the school board president not wearing a mask at the last meeting? Rules for thee, not for me. Why are we wasting thousands of hard-earned taxpayer money on using Governor Abbott? The governor's EO is very clear, along with the Supreme Court. Where is the extra security staff promised under the $1 billion bond money? Ninth Amendment says the enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights should not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people, which means lawsuits will go nowhere. Now, let's take it a little bit further. Article 128 of the Texas Constitution suspends the laws. No power of suspending laws in the state shall be exercised except by the legislation, Bill of Rights accepted from powers of government and involutive. There's another strike for you, because I don't remember Governor Abbott at one point in time saying, hey, let me call the legislature so I can overreach as far as I want to go. Now, let's go a little bit farther. Section 62, Article 3, which is line 5, "The date on which law is passed by the legislature takes effect." He still did not go through the legislation to find, to get them to sign, just as it says here. I'm just urging y'all that. Y'all are fisting to waste a whole bunch of money just for us to go. When are you gonna listen? When are you gonna learn that once the Supreme Court says it's what it is, and that's what it is? You can go to the Supreme Court 99% of the time, and that's facts. You're gonna see, they're gonna strike it down and say, they made the decision, we uphold the decision. Use that money for better to get these kids tutoring, which is what they need, so they can catch up from last year.
Okay, do we have Krista Grant, virtual? Okay, we can't hear you. Okay, keep talking. No.
Now, you can hear me?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Last March, when COVID-19 was new to all of us, blanket mitigation approaches were logical. Temporary but extreme measures made sense to put in place to give authorities time to get a grasp on the severity of the virus, as well as come up with plans that fit each individual community. As time has gone on, scientists have learned more and more about this virus, and as families have learned about how to individually address the health of their own families, we must put these responsibilities and decisions into the hands of every individual. Masking is not the only way to keep oneself and others safe. Nutrition, exercise, sleep, activity levels, sunlight, spiritual practices, and emotional health are all ways to focus on the internal terrain. Healthy terrains yield healthy immune responses, and healthy immune responses yield healthy individuals. We're faced with decisions, health decisions, on a daily basis, and we must learn to live in a way that respects, supports, and advocates not just one form of protection and support. Lastly, I want to remind you each of the oath that you took. When you were sworn into your elected positions, each of you solemnly swore to faithfully execute the duties of the Office of the School Board of Trustees and to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States. Section 418012 of the Texas Code states executive orders, proclamations, and regulations have the force and effect of law. Voting for a mask mandate would be in direct violation to Governor Abbott's executive order, therefore breaking Texas law and going against the very oath you swore to uphold. While I don't personally agree with the lawsuit against Governor Abbott, as I strongly advocate for personal responsibility and choice, I believe in following the processes provided for us through the court of law to fight systems we believe to go against our rights. And I do understand that approach some may see appropriate to fight for when they believe is right. Ultimately, I urge each of you to consider the long-term ramifications of breaking the law, not just for the Board of Trustees or the AISD, but every parent, teacher, and student watching you. We must stand on following the law, not breaking it, because we do not agree with it. That is a slippery slope that will not bode well for anyone.
Thank you. Your time is expended.
Okay, is Tony Pham present? Mr. Pham? You may start.
Thank you. Good evening, distinguished members of the board. I'm a recent high school graduate student, and I'm here just to tell you a story. A couple of days ago, my mom, she was randomly awake, just got a call from my aunt. My aunt told my mom that my grandparents had COVID and that my grandpa had to go to the hospital. It's quite a frightening call for her, as she had stayed up late for that. And all of us in my family knew that my grandparents had some severe underlying conditions. I have the luxury of living away from my parents, from my grandparents, so that way I know that I don't get infected. But I know many of your students don't have that luxury for that. I don't want to go through that emotional pain like I did. And I don't want to ever wish that on anyone, not only for their grandparents, their parents, or any one of their relatives. And even I myself have gone COVID before. And the emotional pain of getting that, of going through the testing, of getting testing from my parents as well, it's extreme. It's painful. And I don't want any of your students having to go through that emotional pain of losing that freedom to study without that pain. It's excruciating. And so my small ask for you, please think of those who are not in this room. Please think of your students. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Donna Lopez. Donna, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you may start speaking.
Yes. My name's Donna Lopez. My children, two of them, have been in Jones Academy since they were three and four when it was Rockmore, PPCD. And here recently, I had to unenroll them. They are now 12 and 13. Due to the fact that virtual was not gonna be offered because children that are 12 and above can get injections. Well, first of all, not all children are the same. My grandson, that's 12, he can't have the vaccine because of his blood pressure, his heart, and his kidneys. And he's severe asthmatic. And me as well, I'm terminally ill. I'm in the last stages of lupus, and I have kidney, heart, and liver failure. So I would just like for any and all of y'all on the board to think about virtual. But y'all need to think about the older kids as well. Not all kids are the same. Not all households are the same. No one knows what the next is going through. Right now, I'm having to homeschool them, which that's I. The 12-year-old, he's dyslexic, autistic, but he walked across the stage through the pandemic this year with an AB honor roll that he's never done before, because I was able to give him a one-on-one.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Your time is over.
Okay, my next three names that I will call is Tiffany Deslogas. Apologize if I mispronounced that, Mary Saw Fritz, and Heidi Fritz. And Hayden Fritz, you can come up too. Tiffany?
Hi, everyone. I am an AISD graduate, and this is my hometown and now where I'm raising my family. My daughter started kindergarten last year at Corey. It was optional mask, but pretty quickly went into mandatory. We were so excited to get into such a wonderful school full of so many different learning opportunities. She complained about not feeling like she could breathe at school and her ears hurt after the long days. She told us how air hugs are the safe way to hug. After her year, she was scared to be near people. She feels down about her level of intelligence after attempting to learn how to read, learn a second language, and learn... learn a second language, and learn social skills, all with masked people. Studies show that wearing masks does not affect the spread of viruses that are smaller than the openings in non-N95 masks. If you believe in masks, then wear one. Your child wearing one, and my child not wearing one, will not cancel out the effectiveness of your mask if you believe in its efficacy. Studies show children are at a low risk of spreading COVID and at an extremely low risk of dying, and that mask mandates do not reduce school or community transmission. I can email a list of studies if anyone is interested. All of this leads me to want the freedom to choose for my child, my family. If the freedom to choose is removed, then I would enjoy the freedom to choose where to send my education tax dollars. My daughter is loving first grade. She can smile and breathe and enjoy school. I will be pulling her from AISD without the freedom of mask choice. Her psychological welfare is far too important to me to do this to her another year. We are a nation created under God. If you feel badly about what's going on, creating fear in children of being close to other people, having children feel like the very breath they breathe isn't allowed and is dirty, please know the Creator's watching, thank you.
Okay, Marisol and Heidi and Hayden, if you would like to all come up.
Can I just make sure?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
Let me just find my little spot here, if you don't mind. Okay. Ready? I had been an ER nurse for 22 years and lost a shift every week for over a year because we didn't have enough patients during a pandemic. Everybody watched Stu Peters' interview with Patrick King from Alberta, Canada, about the SARS-CoV-2 isolation. We want the material and scientific evidence for the isolation of SARS-CoV-2 from Arlington ISD and the Texas Department of Health. Legally, the commissioner needs to justify any and all COVID-19 public health facts. This virus needs to be 100% isolated in order to exist, and no entity to include the CDC can provide this evidence because it does not exist. Therefore, you cannot force us to do anything in the name of something that is nonexistent. No vaccine, no mask, no social distance, no more draconian measures, period. We want proof of the testing used to diagnose the Delta variant. Everyone call the labs, hospitals, doctors' offices, and ask them. Masks are authorized under emergency use authorization, which means they are unapproved and experimental. You will not continue to experiment on our children. Per Section 201H of the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, masks are medical devices. The FDA regulates these devices. You are prescribing a medical intervention. Are y'all medical doctors? I don't think you are, none of you. You've been practicing medicine for over a year. Per the Texas Occupations Code, 165.159, practicing medicine without a license is a third-degree felony and punishable by law by two to 10 years in jail and a $5,000 fine for each day committed, a crime is committed. The person who called us whiny, Kim Martinez, also wrote her own obituary last September. How did she survive?
Ms. Chris, I'd ask that you not play any videos. I had to make an announcement before we all started to everyone to not like any videos or anything from the social device. If you would like for us to listen to it, you are more than welcome to send it to each of us, and we will do that. But for now, we just want to listen to what you have to say.
Okay, because I've seen people use...
Not tonight.
Oh, just not tonight? Oh, got it. So you can, you can, you're trying to...
I'm not trying to do anything. I'm saying that you cannot play videos or any kind of social media because we'd like to hear you. We've heard everything that you've said. Okay, next, Heidi or Hayden?
Can I start?
Yes, you may start.
I'm a 10th grader at Lamar High School. An online school for me was terrible, and honestly, I'm way happier being at school and being able to see all the people I couldn't see for a year and a half. One of our teachers is having us clean desks. I'm not a janitor. I'm not going to clean a desk. It's not, it's not mine, it's a school's. And the moment I was born, the moment I took my first breath, I had my own inalienable rights, and so does everyone else in this room. So I'm able to choose if I want to wear a mask or not. That's, my parents make my health decisions, but I also have my own choices as well. If I want to go to school, then I'm going to go to school, and I'm going to go see my friends and people there. There's kids there that are scared when they really shouldn't be at all. Whenever I was online, I could barely even get out of bed and do my own assignments. I'm surprised I didn't fail. The only reason I didn't fail was because my parents made sure that we got out of bed, and that we did our work, and that we didn't fail and have to do summer school. So I have my parents to thank for that. When I go to school now, regardless of all the people that are wearing masks and everything, I have fun there. I'm happy there. This is actually the happiest I've been in a year and a half. I don't know how many times, that's probably the most I've cried in a year and a half, just ever. The kids that are committing suicides, the highest that it's ever been in 2020. That's because the school board made virtual learning, they put virtual learning. You don't do that. We've gone to school our entire lives, school physically. We never went online. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm a visual learner. So I can't just, I can't look at something unless someone shows me. I have to see it with my own two eyes. I have to have them show me, because otherwise, I don't know what I'm doing. I have trouble with it. So me being at school is...
Thank you.
Hayden?
This year, I am glad to be back in school, to see my friends, everything again. But what really bothers me is that I had to see almost everyone, including my friends, wear masks. The thing about that, I just don't like it because the fact that it could be possibly killing them. And I'm really worried about that. My friend Ashley, I picked up a pink slip, and she said, "Put it down, it has COVID on it." That's what really ticked me off, which made me want to stay away from her. Because of the fact that she believes more about COVID than anybody else. I think that's unacceptable, even for everyone to wear masks out there. I was also told to clean a desk and clean a bathroom pass.
By who?
By...
A teacher or who?
By one of my teachers. Bathroom pass by one of my history teachers. I had to clean that. And then I had to clean a desk by one of my English teachers. I really hated that. I hate all of it, but I'm just glad I'm back at school and able to learn again. Because last year, I hardly learned anything, like Heidi. She hardly learned anything either. We both hardly learned anything. And we weren't allowed to go to school.
And why? Tell them why.
We weren't allowed to go to school because of you guys.
What did you have to wear?
I had to, we had to wear a mask if we had to go to school.
Is Andrew Lipscomb present? Okay. And then the two after you are virtual. So Mr. Lipscomb, you'll be the only one walking up right now, so you can start speaking when you are ready.
Thank you. Hello, trustees and Superintendent Cabazos. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Andrew Lipscomb. I'm the parent of an AISD student. I would like to speak about any proposed mask mandate you may be considering. I attended the last board meeting where you unanimously voted to return to normal in-person operations. I was very happy with that decision. As many school districts and counties have done, I expect you to follow Governor Abbott's executive order banning mask mandates. There is no reason to force employees, students, and parents to wear a mask on AISD property. Imposing your beliefs and desires on another person is anti-American. If you want to follow the science, the NIH sponsored at least three prior studies that demonstrate masks do not stop tiny virus particles such as COVID-19. Yes, this is contrary to the advice they now dispense. People may choose to wear a mask just as they can choose to get the unapproved experimental vaccine. You do not have the authority to take away someone's right to make their own health decisions. Furthermore, if someone believes a mask shouldn't matter, excuse me, if someone believes a mask and the vaccine is protecting them, it shouldn't matter what someone else chooses to do. I urge you to focus on decisions and, excuse me, I urge you to focus on personal freedoms when making decisions, and remember you are elected officials representing the parents of this district, and we, the parents, will remember your decisions. Lastly, I want to address the statement by President Mays posted on the district's website. It stated in part that no pediatric ICU beds were available. That is very misleading and essentially fear-mongering. You know that ICU beds, excuse me, you know that ICU bed availability is fluid, and any child needing such accommodations will be accepted at a hospital, even if outside Arlington, as that is what the Arlington Fire Chief said a year ago when discussing COVID emergency operations. Thank you for your time.
Frank, do we have Esmeralda and/or Whitney? Okay. So we give them a few seconds to come up. Esmeralda? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you for your time. My name is Esmeralda Horniac. I appreciate you providing me the opportunity to speak to the board this evening in regard to the current mask mandates and virtual options in the schools due to the pandemic. As the parent of a gifted and talented AISD student with a compromised immune system, I shouldn't be forced to choose between his health and his education. By choosing to deny students access to virtual learning, AISD is forcing me and parents like us to remove our students from the AISD for their safety. Our son excelled at remote learning and earned a place on every sports team he tried out for at his junior high school. He did what he was asked to do. He wore his mask at athletic events. He recorded and submitted his percussion lessons, and he worked hard to remain an honor student. To protect his teachers, friends, and himself, our son received both the vaccines on the promise it would get him back to school. Our son did what he was asked to do. The AISD has a legal mandate to keep their students safe and to provide them an education. I'll remind this body that attendance in public schools is compulsory. The promise to keep my son safe was in the care of AISD is not one that the district can just set aside when it is politically inconvenient, difficult to coordinate, or a strain on the budget. This year, by failing to provide a remote learning option, the AISD is causing harm to its students who need this option the most. The choice of AISD to fail our son by denying him access to remote learning during a growing pandemic is inexcusable. We must look to find ways to provide a safe learning environment, whether that be in-person or as a virtual option. It is up to AISD to provide those options so that he can continue to attend an AISD school. Without any options, we will be forced to withdraw him until a virtual option or some other suitable safe environment is provided. AISD has usually erred on the side of caution and looked to find ways in which all students may be granted an education this last year, no matter how unpopular the idea. This year, no real precautions were put in place for parents who wanted a safe environment for their children like masks.
Thank you, your time is ended.
Thank you for your time and attention, darkly.
Okay, Frank, next we have Whitney Moon. No, okay. So next names I would call, if you will come forward, is Paige Amato, Belinda K. Hart, and then after Belinda, we have Jennifer, who will be virtual. Paige?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Today, I come to you as a concerned parent of an AISD student. Please do not strip away my rights as a parent to handle my child's care. The choice to mask or not to mask should not be taken away from parents. It should remain a choice, not a mandate, not an edict. The long-term effects of wearing masks for extended periods of time are not known, and the costs far exceed the benefits. There appears to be no data that shows that mask mandates for children are a good policy. Please do not ignore what could be best for the children in favor of adopting a potentially harmful policy simply for the sake of taking action. Our rights come from God and should not be stripped away by governments or school boards. Spending taxpayer dollars on a frivolous lawsuit does not suit the children of Arlington and their needs, the very group you purport to protect. Please truly stand for the children of Arlington and do not move forward with a lawsuit and mandates. And I also today have brought a box of N95 masks, which are far more effective than cloth masks or the masks you get at doctor's offices. On the box itself, the number 2, the warning, states that this respirator is not guaranteed to protect against the risk of contracting a disease or infection, and you may look at it. Thank you for your time.
Whitney? Whitney?
Belinda Hart.
Okay. Okay. Belinda?
My name is Belinda K. Hart. Members of the board, superintendents, I want to thank y'all for this opportunity. I stand here, I'm a mother of a high schooler, two high schoolers, a freshman and a senior, and I have two grandchildren, and I also have a eighth grader. And I've had three or four other children come through Arlington ISD. Myself am an Arlington ISD graduate. I stand here alone, by myself today, because back when masks were mandated, my husband and my family and I were at a basketball game, and my husband had pulled his mask down to his chin like some of the members have done here today, and he got a criminal trespass warning against him, and he is no longer allowed on any Arlington ISD. If we do mask mandates, y'all are going to want to punish children, parents, that don't adhere to that. I ask for the freedom as a parent, as a grandmother, to allow us the choice. If you want to wear your mask, that's fine, that's your decision. It's kind of like religion. The reason why we don't have prayer in school is because different people, they serve different gods. And so we have the freedom to choose who we serve. Let us have the choice of how we want to raise our children, and if we want them to wear a mask or not. I ask you to vote against filing a lawsuit against Governor Abbott. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. You can start speaking?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a parent of an AISD student. I am a parent of an immune-compromised child. I am a wife of a teacher in the AISD, and I'm a registered nurse in this district. I'm extremely concerned for the students in the AISD, especially for those that are unvaccinated. I'm concerned for my staff as well, as some of them are doing the best that they can under these extreme circumstances. The Delta variant of COVID-19 is horrifically more contagious than the original COVID variant. Delta is 40% more infectious than the original strain. For example, with the original strain of COVID, one infected person could infect one to two people. With the Delta variant, it's much worse. One infected person will infect five to six people. Let me give you a glimpse into what I have personally been dealing with as a campus nurse this last week. Last week alone, I had over eight cases of COVID-19 on my campus to report. Now that total is 12. That is more than I have ever had last year at one time. In that same week, I had a mother of a child in my office crying, terrified for her children, one whom is not eligible for the vaccine yet. She cannot fathom how something so simple as masks are not being worn or required. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, Cook's Children's, and Dallas... The American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, Cook's Children's, and Dallas Children's all support wearing masks in public schools. Scientists and doctors all over the world agree on masks, social distancing, and contact tracing as ways to mitigate COVID-19. This has been proven time and time again with real scientific studies. I have emailed each one of you just a few links from reputable, reputable medical and scientific sources of how and why masks work. It's really quite simple. I even emailed a graphic. This is not a political issue, this is a health and safety issue.
Thank you, Jennifer, we appreciate your time.
Should be able to go to work in a safe environment.
Ms. Darnell, your time is over, thank you. Okay, I will call the next three names. Armandina Gueda, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Brian Williams, and Teri Warren.
Hello. On choice, I have to say, we, men and women who took the oath to the Constitution have died in the name of freedom. So that's something to remember, for sure. The other thing on masks is when they turn up the 5G on us and the frequencies, the microwaves, these masks are not going to protect us because it's coming, and it's coming. Because it's a globalist thing, and y'all can laugh, but it, it's going to be coming because it's a globalist thing. So it's no wonder why the Soviet Union took the model of the American education school system. Because, for instance, with all these protocols and interruptions, like these here that, that just were, were told to clean desk, I mean, all these protocols, what, what's going on with the political theater that is being imposed on our young kids is that it's like we're, what's being made of them in the future is to turn into communist pupils. This is all this, where all this is going. If we make it that far because of the microwaves. But nevertheless, the masks impede their breathing, and everything, everybody else has already said so far about the germs being contained on these masks. It, it's not helping. They say, the liberals, they say, defund the police. If school system wants to keep playing politics with our children instead of focusing on how to further our children's education to compete in this world of technology, like the liberals, they say, defund the police. I will say, to defund the public school system. And that would mean vouchers and school choice. So I know that in the past, that has been brought up. But apparently, both parties, for some reason, they must begin their backdoor deals that vouchers doesn't happen.
Thank you. Is Brian Williams present? Okay, Teri Warren?
Hello, my name is Teresa Warren.
Wait, just, there you go.
I'm a concerned grandmother in the Arlington, uh, with grandchildren in the Arlington schools. Regarding the science on face masks, there was a study published in the Journal of American Medical Association, Pediatrics, June 2021, that cited a clinical trial in Germany with kids from the ages of six to 17 years old. CO2 levels under the masks were measured, and, and after just three minutes of wearing them, the children's CO2 levels exceeded what was considered acceptable, with the child with the lowest level of CO2 measuring three times the allowable limit. The study noted that the children's complaints of irritability, headaches, and reluctance to go to school can be understood by looking at their high levels of CO2. A second study published in April 2021 in the International Journal of Environmental Research reviewed 65 different studies on face masks. Of these 65, 44 showed negative, significant negative effects of face coverings. This summer, a group of Florida parents got their children's required masks tested by the University of Florida Mass Spectrometry Research and Education Lab, and they found pathogenic bacteria clinging to the mask that was capable of causing diseases such as tuberculosis, pneumonia, and meningitis. Parents that wish to mask their children have the freedom to do so. We are simply asking for the same freedom to choose for parents who do not wish to. The only viable path going forward is to respect the choices of both groups. Thank you.
Okay, the last three names I have is Teresa Miller, Amy Orndorf, and Devon Hart, who should be joining us virtually. So Teresa Miller?
Hello.
Hello.
I am an Arlington High graduate. I also have a daughter enrolled in AISD. I'm not a doctor, but I do research, and I found something interesting from Dr. Jerome Adams. He's the United States Surgeon General. He's talking about masks, and he says, "A surgical mask does not protect you from a respiratory virus." It's got leaks all around it, and it's really designed as a barrier of protection in the operating room. He's also talking about the N95 masks. He said those have to be fit tested to the person wearing them. It has to have a tight seal, and they are mostly worn by healthcare professionals, not by your everyday kids. The, the masks the kids are wearing are these. I found this in, on the ground. That's what, that's what they're wearing. And they're wearing them wrong. The average person, they, they're wearing them improperly. They touch their face, they move them around, it's very uncomfortable, and they're hard to breathe through. Not only are they not prevent, using, preventing the, the wearers from getting diseases, they're actually increasing the chances of contracting something because they're all cross-contaminated. Children have proven to have strong innate immunity. They are safe, they are resilient, and they should not be wearing masks. This board should be thinking about those children, and you should not pursue the lawsuit. Thank you.
Amy? Okay.
Hi, thank you all for listening to us tonight, and thank all the extra staff that have to stay so late. I just want to say I support the lawsuit. My kids go to junior high and high school. They wear NKN or N95s every day. They don't have a problem with it. They actually enjoy it, knowing that they're keeping themselves and their other classmates safer. And I would like to say I do support the lawsuit, and as an alternative, if you need one, we could always add it to the dress code. Thank you.
Okay, so Frank, do we have Devon? Or Devon, if I'm mispronouncing it? Okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome, awesome. I thank you all so much, I am so honored. I'd like to acknowledge the chamber, and just can't thank you, thank you all, appreciate your hard work and all your efforts that you have given, and what we've gone through over the last year, so. However, I value everybody's opinion, with just some really, really good opinions up here. The only thing I want to say is that the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob made, created laws, and he put these laws in place because laws keep things in order. Laws keeps excellence. And when man begins to try to make, break laws, and, and making laws or twisting laws, because they may have another agenda, they may fear, in this case, fear of getting sick, or whatever the case may be, or they think it's safer, or whatever the case may be, laws are in place for that reason alone, and that's why God won't ever break his law, because it keeps order. Regardless if there's a, a, a fear of somebody getting sick, or God forbid, I, you know, because somebody gets sick, I, I get that. But we don't break the law just because things get uneasy or, or scary, or things get, and laws have got to stay there because that's what keeps us in order, and that's what gives people choices. And we were raised, this country was raised and built on choices. We've always had a choice. So I'm not saying, you know, take away the mask, get vaccinated, don't get vaccinated, I'm not saying any of that. All I'm saying is this. Give us some online classes, online school, give it to us fairly. Don't make it hard as, how, a heck, to, to, to pass on online, which I figured, I mean, it was really, really tough.
Sir, thank you, sir, your time is over.
Okay, can I get one more second, though?
Thank you.
Just one more second, I'll be done. But just give us a choice to be on, either online
Okay.
or in the school building.
Thank you, Devon.
If you want to wear your mask, okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, so if I'm correct, I don't have any other names on here. Frank, did anyone who was supposed to speak show up virtually during this time? No one's waiting, okay. So with that being said, before we move on in our agenda, due to the amount of time, I would like to call a five-minute break so that we can get something to drink, use the restroom, and we will be back at 8:31, it is now 8:26. Okay, we are back, and we will bring this meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is an action item, and that is Consider Ordinance Number 141, Setting the 2021 Tax Rate. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring a recommendation to set the 2021 tax rate, and I'll ask our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Moss, to take us through a brief presentation about the tax rate. So Ms. Moss?
Budget adoption that I will be briefed tonight. So I'll just share with you the timeline that we used in that 2122 budget process. Just a couple of items I'll highlight. On June the 11th, we did publish the notice per the law. June 22nd, we held a public hearing, and June 22nd, we adopted the budget. Tonight, I'm going to bring you the proposed tax rate for your approval and your adoption. If you'll recall, we shared this chart with the board back in May, and this is where we, the yellow column shows you our projections based on the April estimates that we received from the Tarrant Appraisal District. The column on the far right shows you our estimates based on historical data. Those were datas, that's data that was provided July 21st, when we received our certified estimated values, and we projected an increase of 5.96%. In May, the actual increase came out to be 5.5%. And that was based on the July values and the increase used to calculate the MCR as approved by TEA. This chart just shares the certified estimate that we received on July 21. It was $34,967,234,515, or a 5.5% increase. This is a $1.8 billion increase over last year's values, which were just over $33 billion, which was a 1.8% increase over the previous year. Our next chart just shows a breakdown of our MNO values, our maintenance and operation values. The Tier 1 portion of the MNO rate shows a decrease of 6, 2.63 pennies. This is a portion of the rate that was compressed by, as a result of House Bill 3. The Tier 2 rate remains the same and includes four golden pennies and, that have been in place for some time, and now the additional 13 pennies that were approved by the VATRE that passed last November. This shows, the next slide shows you the total rate that we are proposing to the board. It includes an MNO rate of 1.0601 and the INS rate of .3007 for a total rate of 1.3608 that we're asking for you to adopt tonight. We are proposing that that INS rate remain the same. We're scheduled for a bond issuance earlier next year and possibly a refunding as well. I think maybe I skipped one, hang on. For some reason, that tax rate history will not come up. Do you, y'all have that one in your packet as well? I think it did that the last time I was on the screen, I don't know what, what happens to that one, yeah, but I'll just talk to that one. It just shows you, for the last nine years, our MNO rate has been 1.04, and House Bill 3 tax compression decreased that, and the MNO rate was .97 cents in the 1920 year. And then again, our voters approved that VATRE, which made the, increased the rate to 1.0864. Further compression for House Bill 3, and a result of the 5.5% increase that we're seeing this year, gets the value that we're asking for tonight, the 1.0601. And so for the tax rates here, there are four different rates in state law that we're required, required to calculate for the board. The no new revenue tax rate is 1.268712. The tax rate necessary to maintain the same, same level of MNO revenue per pupil in paid debt services is 1.294, 1.29492, and the voter-approved tax rate is 1.38138. This is a maximum tax rate allowed without voter approval. The proposed tax rate, of course, is the 1.36080, which includes the MNO rate of 1.0610 and .3007, as we stated earlier. And I just thought I would share with you the impact of, of all, of the, of the data to our general fund budget that you adopted back in, in June. Based on the July certified estimate, the values of the current year taxes are $348 million, and the state revenue is $172 million, for a total of $521-plus million. When we adopted the budget, the current taxes were projected at $348,705,283, and the state revenue was projected at $172,457,487. The overall increase you see on the right-hand side at the bottom is $132,899, which is a minimal compared to that $521 million that we're looking at. I will end by saying, again, thank you to Mrs. Hamrick and the budget team. All these calculations are provided from, come from that department. They've done some outstanding work, and as you note, we were really close in our projections on, on the rate. Administration recommends approval of the, of the tax rate, and I'm glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Moss and your team, thank you for the calculation. As we talked about there, certain budget season, we tentatively had a tax rate of where we thought, but it took you guys being accurate to come there from what our certified values actually came back. And so just for understanding, because I do have to read a kind of motion that adds some different pieces on there, but what, what we're seeing is a, is a two-cent, a two-point, I'm sorry, 2.63 cent decrease is what we're seeing from compression, correct?
Yes, sir. So that, basically, that means we are saving the taxpayers .263 cents on their tax rate.
And when, and when taxable values do come up, we don't see it all, from what you saw, correct? Through formula funding, through things that go to the state, correct?
Exactly.
So, so it's a, it's one of those. So from what you see, $132,899 is what we're seeing as an increase for the year on a $520 million budget.
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I needed. Just wanted to make that clear. At this time, unless there's other discussion, President Mays, I'm more than willing to make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Hogg, do I have a second?
I got to read it, Ms. Mays, just to make the, I just wanted to see if there's more discussion.
Go right ahead. I do not see any other people listed to speak.
I move that the property tax be increased, adoption of tax rate of $136,0800, which effectively a 7.26 increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion by Mr. Hogg, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mr. Willbanks. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote roll call, starting with Dr. Reich.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Louis Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McRum, yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
All present vote in the affirmative, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is action item for consider approval of suit against Governor's Executive Order 38. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we asked for Board to consider this item, the suit against Governor's Executive Order 38, at this time.
President Mays?
Mr. Chapa, we can hear you.
Thank you, President Mays. Is there, is there a presentation on this, or are we proceeding to discussion?
Dr. Cavassos?
There is not a presentation, as the Board has received legal advice. We can answer questions.
Okay.
And Justin, you still have the floor if you have questions.
No, I don't have questions. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Sorry. President Mays, at this time, I would move to authorize Michael Baumwirt, L. Hanson Powell, and Hugo to file suit on behalf of the district with respect to the authority of the board trustees under Texas Education Code, Section 11.151.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Ms. Mays.
Have a second by Mr. Willbanks. Any discussion?
As President Mays, I'd like to discuss.
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion, as I have read, it would only authorize the district to file suit under the Texas Education Code. And if you've been paying attention to the news, that's the provision of the Education Code that allows to provide school districts the authority to do things like set a school dress code, which we've always had the authority to do. And in fact, last year was the mechanism by which we implemented mask requirements and protocols. That is not the issue.
Justin, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you don't mind, just going back and saying some of the last things you said, so we can hear you clearly.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes, and obviously, if you can please be quiet so we can hear what he's saying as well.
Yes, so the, my motion is to just authorize the district to file a lawsuit. I'm not instructing the district to file a lawsuit, not explaining laws, just a minute. But this is asking for the lawsuit, if it is filed, to be filed under the Education Code. That's the, the provision that allows us to set student dress codes and things like that. And in fact, last year, that is the mechanism we used to authorize masks in our MIST schools. There has not been a lawsuit yet regarding the executive order's effect on the Education Code, and the reason for that is that the Governor's Executive Order does not suspend the Education Code. In fact, I think it's doubtful the government, the governor even has the authority to do that. But regardless of my opinion, it is not in the text of the Governor's Executive Order that issued in late July. Now, I want to, because I think, we refer to this executive order a lot, but I don't think many people have actually read it, so I'm just going to read some excerpts from it. This is Executive Order GA 38. GA stands for Greg Abbott, and it issued on July 29th, and it supersedes GA 37, which was issued just a little bit earlier in the year, which also suspended a bunch of different local government authority to address pandemic in their communities. But that order, and prior orders of the governor, it had, had at times included triggers, where if the pandemic had a resurgence and certain thresholds of spread were met, that local governments could resume exercising their authorities. GA 38 took away those thresholds just as the Delta surge was beginning. Now, I think it's important that people understand what this executive order says, because it says things that I don't think most people know. It begins by saying, "Whereas I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, issued a disaster proclamation on March 13, 2020, certifying under Section 418.014 of the Texas Government Code that the novel coronavirus COVID-19 poses an imminent threat of disaster for all Texas counties, and whereas in each subsequent month effective through today," that would be July 29, 2021, "I have renewed the COVID-19 disaster declaration, renewed the COVID-19 disaster declaration for all Texas counties." So the order begins by saying that the governor is renewing a state of disaster because of the COVID-19 pandemic for the entire state. Now, if you skip a little further down, and this is the crux of the issue that we're facing right now is the school district, it says, "Whereas under Section 418.012, that the governor, that quote, 'The governor may issue executive orders having the force and effect of laws,' end quote, and whereas under Section 418.016A, the quote, 'Governor may suspend the provisions of any regulatory statute prescribing the procedures for the conduct of state business if strict compliance with the provisions would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action in coping with a disaster.'" And that is the provision that the governor relies upon to later in the order say that no governmental entity, including a county, city, school district, and any public health authority, and no government official may inquire a person to, or to mandate that another person wear face covering. Now, a lawsuit, as some of you, several lawsuits were filed over the governor's interpretation of his authority under the law that he cited in his executive order. And the reason for that is it just doesn't work as a plain reading of the statute. The governor does not have the authority to declare what the law is, even if it does, is not supported by the plain text of a statute. He only has the authority that the Texas Legislature has given him, and here, the Texas Legislature sought it to give the governor the authority to suspend the local laws to the extent that they interfered with his ability to cope with a statewide emergency. Now, I know that people have different opinions about masks, but to me, this is also a really important issue about local control. It should rarely be the case that local governments should not have the ability to address emergencies within their own community, and here, what the government, the governor's doing is suspending our ability to address local conditions on the ground here by citing a provision that allows him to suspend laws that interfere with his ability to deal with the pandemic emergency that he has recognized in the same order is a statewide disaster. So it makes little logical sense to say that us doing something like taking, following medical authorities' advice to take reasonable steps to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in our schools is somehow preventing the governor from coping with a statewide pandemic emergency. And so there have been several state courts that have struck down that part of the Governor's Executive Order. Now, I want to move on to one of those cases. This case is called Southern Center for Child Advocacy versus Greg Abbott in his official capacity as Governor of Texas. The reason this case is important, it was actually filed against Governor Abbott. These are not the lawsuits against county judges like the one in Dallas involving Clay Jenkins, or the one in Beyer County in San Antonio. This is a lawsuit against Greg Abbott in his official capacity, which means it's an attempt to restrict the ability of the governor to, to enforce his executive order as the force of law, which is what he claimed. Now, the governor can be sued in Austin, that's why this lawsuit was filed there. Last, on August 15th, a temporary restraining order was entered against Governor Abbott from enforcing GA 38, the executive order. I want to read from that order. It said that the plaintiff, that's the party that was trying to get the executive order halted to the extent that it restricted local government's ability to implement masking requirements, that the plaintiff has shown a probable right to relieve an imminent and irreparable injury. These are the standards you have to meet to get an injunction entered. And then it goes to some other legal language, but the ruling itself says accordingly, "It is hereby ordered that the governor and his agents are temporarily restrained and enjoined from enforcing the portions of Executive Order GA 38 regarding face covering against Texas independent school districts without limitation." So as of August 15th, the executive order had no force of law, because it's been temporarily enjoined by a court. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about understanding arrows to the Constitution, and I take that very seriously. I myself am an attorney, and I on occasion practice constitutional law. And when a court enjoins a state official from enforcing the laws that they have issued, those authorities have to obey that court order. The executive branch can issue orders, but it's the judicial branch that decides whether those orders have the force of law. And here, this court said the executive order does not. There's also been discussion tonight at the Texas Supreme Court. Well, of course, Governor Abbott appealed this ruling and sought emergency relief from the Texas Supreme Court, and just as this meeting began, the Texas Supreme Court denied his petition for emergency relief. So the TRO, the injunction, temporary injunction, or temporary restraining order that was entered last on August 15th by the Travis County Court, still has the force of law statewide. So the, the portion of the governor's order preventing school districts from imposing masking requirements is not, does not have the force of law. And so that is important, because I believe that we do not need to authorize a lawsuit tonight to declare our authority to implement masking mandates. That decision has already been made, and the Texas Supreme Court has decided that the governor did not show that he had a strong enough case to deserve emergency relief on this point. And given the language in the law that the government, governor relied upon to issue the executive order, I'm not sure that the governor is going to be able to show his right to, to win that lawsuit at any point, but that's for future courts to decide. The bottom line is that the governor's order, executive order, is not the law in Texas tonight. Now, the reason I want to authorize a lawsuit under the Education Code is, as I said, that is not part of the governor's executive order. So I would like to authorize the district to be able to file a lawsuit if needed to vindicate the rights that school districts have always had as local governments to set local dress codes, which can include mask mandates. Our dress code, among other things, if you've read it, requires that students wear a certain kind of shoes doing certain activities, requires that students wear certain types of undergarments. Until very recently, it prohibited students from, you know, the horror wearing, of, of wearing t-shirts that, that had straps that were too narrow. We've always had the authority as local governments to address local needs like that. So in the event that the TRO, which was upheld tonight at some point in the near future, is, is that injunction is removed, I would like to authorize the district in that circumstance to then vindicate our rights under the Education Code, which the governor has not suspended, to file a lawsuit if necessary to vindicate our local control rights. And so that is why I'm making the motion. I want to be clear that I don't think we need to file a lawsuit today. I think we already have the right to proceed to considering a mask requirement because of tonight's Texas Supreme Court ruling, and this is just for a contingency if in the future, the, the temporary injunction is removed. And that's, I'll leave it at that for now. I've been talking for quite a bit, and, and lawyers are wanting to talk.
Okay, Mr. Chapa, is there any other discussion? Yeah, but I can't see. Can you turn on your mic? I don't have the opportunity to. Frank, can you turn on Mr. Hogg's mic, please?
Awesome. Good.
Yes.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you, Ms. Chapa, for your thoughts. Ms. Chapa, I know you're probably a really strong qualified attorney. I am not attorney, luckily. That is not my strength, that is not what I wanted to do, even though I have a nephew-in-law in law school. I'm glad I'll have a lawyer in the family, but I'm glad I am not one. We are not a court of law up here. Do I believe the governor has the right to mandate? Yes. I do believe the governor. When I took this oath of office 13 years ago, the oath was to follow the laws in this state. I have stood before and sued the state of Texas. I joined with other trustees when we thought the Constitution of Texas, which requires constitutional funding for public schools, was not following that. Almost 10 years ago, we did that. So I'm not afraid to sue the state of Texas. But don't try and fool people that this isn't about a mask mandate, and it's about local control. I fight for local control every single year in the legislature. Every single year, I spend more time in Austin, but I think it's really disingenuous to legal jargon and say, "We are focused on, this is just about local control." Well, why didn't you file it six months ago? Why didn't you file it during that time? And to then try and say, "We're going to take it around and go through a dress code," I think is even more disingenuous. Luckily, myself and my colleagues, and I remember bringing it up, we took that out of the dress code, luckily. Never did I think I would be facing it for this, but luckily, we did pull that out of the dress code. Or otherwise, we probably wouldn't be having to have this discussion if this was still in our dress code. Even if you wanted to put it in the dress code, we don't have an item on the agenda for us to address the dress code tonight. So you'll have to wait for the next meeting, or try and call another emergency meeting to put a dress code item on there, because I don't see anything on the agenda to address a dress code tonight. We're relying on, the Supreme Court's already overturned one, and I, and I understand your points of, of that. Fort Worth had one overturned. There are certain judges, we're relying on a temporary restraining order. Giving staff the full way of whenever they're ready to file it, to file it, I don't think's the right option. I think if you want to file it in the future, bring it back to this board, and we can decide and authorize our superintendent. Because in my opinion, the only people that really win on this are the attorneys, and the attorney's fees from what we're talking about and where we're trying to go on this. You're relying on a TRO that, who knows if the Supreme Court may strike down? We could always ask the Attorney General for an opinion. There's just so much that goes into this, and, and I'm not a lawyer. So if I butchered legal jargon, I butchered legal jargon. But I do know, I've stood up here trying to count four times and taken that oath, and every single time, I've said, "I'm going to follow the laws of this state, and I plan to do it tonight." And if we are voting on now or in the future in a blanket authorization for staff to eventually sue, I'll be voting no across the board on that.
Thank you, President Mays. Districts across this state are dealing with an emergency right now. Hospitals are overrun. This has been a very difficult decision. I, like many of you, do not want to break the law. I've asked for guidance and prayed for discernment, much as my pastor reminded me on Sunday that King Solomon did, to do the right thing. And it's a dangerous situation. Seek the guidance of experts across the city, from nurses to doctors to EMTs, from parents, and I can tell you, the majority of parents out there are concerned about their, their kids' safety. We, as trustees, owe it to the students, the staff, and their extended families to do what we can to keep them safe. We came off two, a, a year and a half where we know the learning loss was significant. We owe it to those students to make it as safe as possible so that they can return to class and we can prevent having to close down. So as my colleague, who is very sharp legally, as Mr. Hogg pointed out, the lawsuit in Travis County gives us the cover we need without breaking the law, and in addition, the late-breaking news tonight further gives us clearance without going against the governor, because his executive order has a temporary restraining order that's been upheld by the Supreme Court, at least for now. But I strongly believe, like my colleague, Mr. Hogg, that government that governs best governs closest to the people being governed. governs closest to the people being governed. And it is our role as trustees to decide what we need to do to keep our parents and our students safe in this district. We need the flexibility on that. Now, Paris, Texas, Paris, Texas, came up with, I think, the path forward and the model for other districts to follow. We could do, we have two choices tonight. We could follow them and put on an agenda item to change our dress code, or before then, we can do what everyone has available to them. The reason why we have three branches of government, when there's a conflict between two, the executive branch and the legislative branch as to what the law is, we go to a court and have them decide for us and clear it up and give us guidance. So what we're asking our superintendent to do is to do just that. If you took government, you know, our recourse so that we don't break the law is to ask a judge to make a ruling. And that's all we're simply doing, is following Government 101. Go back, go back to high school government. This is under our provision as a entity is to ask for clarification from the judge before we take rash action. So I'll be in support of Mr. Chapa's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Mays, and I appreciate my colleagues. This hasn't been a, an easy time over the past 18-plus months. We all hoped, all of us hoped, that this COVID gift that keeps on giving would be gone. It is not. I, I look at this through, I'll have to say, just in full transparency upfront, through a similar lens of Mr. Hogg. So there's, there's my, my tell. The reality to me, in the over 12 years that I've been an elected official on this board, we have prided ourselves and created a culture of data-driven decisions. And perhaps now isn't the time to talk about it. As a healthcare professional, the, the data has not been supplied by our Tarrant County Public Health, specifically regarding masks, specifically regarding morbidity mortality data of our 2 to 11 age population that doesn't have the choice for vaccines. And that's really my focus. We have focused and created that culture of data-driven decisions. We have created a governance approach, and by governance, I mean legislative advocacy, that was literally created by myself and Mr. Hogg way back when. And one of the things that we always prided ourselves on was to go about the business hopeful for as much local authority and control as possible, but to go about the business of providing the best opportunities and the access to those opportunities for our children, and doing so in a non-political way, which includes filing lawsuits. We have never done that. We have signed on, as Mr. Hogg stated, with every other district in the state, there were two or three different lawsuits, all at the same time, for school finance. We chose one of those. We were not the, the pioneers out there. We were further along down the, the line, and we said, yeah, this is the one, we, we should sign on to this as well. We're not there in this situation at all. We have spent literally over a decade building capacity with our legislators, with our community, to make the best decisions possible for our students on all of our citizens' behalf. This isn't easy for anybody. This issue, specifically the mask thing, is so contentious, it's so divided. And I understand, we're talking about our children and their lives, and what thing would we ever be more passionate about? Should we be more passionate about? Absolutely. It, it's my hope that as a board, we continue to be cohesive as a team. We don't let this create a fissure between us, that we trust in one another. I respect every one of you up here, and I know this is difficult. Speaking on precedence, I for one, as one trustee, will not make the, the ploy to turn this into a political thing, which it really is to me, and unravel over a decade's worth of capacity building and hard work to, that has been successful to the point, even through COVID last year, because of that, we were able to move the needle to protect our kids and do things for educational purposes for all other districts and students in the state. And if we were leading the charge of doing essentially what I see as a political lawsuit, we wouldn't have been able to do those things for all the kids in the state. We, as trustees, our primary job is to look strategically into the future, the crystal ball that nobody knows, to look at that forest through the trees, and to keep our eyes focused on, as we look through those trees, what our unintended consequences are. And I am absolutely not in support of entertaining anything close to a lawsuit. Because the unintended consequence, for me, is not worth putting our district, our community, and our children at greater harm than by, let's see how this thing plays out in the state. Let's, yes, abide by the law, which I think this, this lawsuit consideration is, is a way to not break the law, and I appreciate the creativity of that. And I'll have to say that it wasn't this board as a body that, in my opinion, said, hey, attorney, superintendent, please draft something for our consideration. I did not hear about this at all until last week, and it was not discussed as a body. I have a concern with that as well. But ultimately, I won't take up the floor any longer. I will not support, I will be voting against this and any other motion to file a suit at this time. It is not in the best interest of our students or our community. It's a distraction. Thank you.
Thank you, President Mays. I had a question for our legal counsel. Mr. Eichelbaum, I'm wondering, since there's already been discussion, if I want to table the motion, am I able to do that?
Right now, we have a motion on the floor.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor, but it would be superseded by a motion to table. If there was a second to that motion, there would then be a vote on the motion to table. If it is successful, it's off the mo, off the floor.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, President Mays, I move to table item B regarding the approval of the suit against the governor's executive order, so the board can or cannot address this in the future. I would like to remove it from the vote tonight.
Can you repeat that one more time? To make sure everybody's hearing what you're asking for?
I moved to table item B regarding the approval of suit against governor's executive order, so the board can or cannot address it in the future.
Are you reaching for your mic? Mr. Hogg?
Before I make a second, I'd like a legal opinion from Mr. Eichelbaum on Robert Schul's Thank you, Mr. Eichelbaum.
Yes, sir.
I know you and I have a love for Robert Schul's orders, so I'm trying to make sure we follow the A I S D taught me well, and Robert Schul's order, and FFA trading, starting my sophomore year. With this motion, we have a motion, so the option of, if we went to that motion, we could vote it down. If we table it, it in essence takes it off the table, and then this board would have to put it back on the agenda eventually to bring it back before this board for approval, if, if it wanted to be done in the future, correct?
It could put it on.
Could. Does not, does not, thank you for that clarification, does not require it to be put back on an agenda. It could be put back on an agenda.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, and, thank you, and I think it gets the outcome where we need to be, so I'm willing to motion. I'm willing to give you a second, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Eichelbaum?
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, there, if this, their motion to table, my parliamentary procedure mind says we cannot have discussion. So the vote on the motion that Mrs. Fowler has made and Mr. Hogg has seconded is now the only thing that we're voting on. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mrs. Fowler's motion stated to never bring it back, but, okay, what, repeat what you said.
Yeah, I said, regarding the approval of the suit against governor's executive order, so the board can or cannot address it. So they may bring it up again, or they may not.
Okay. Okay. That's my question. That this is the only thing we're voting on right now.
That is correct, Your Honor.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Hogg. Please vote.
President Mays, I have a motion.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Eichelbaum, you can stay right there, just in case. Mr. Chapa, we can hear you.
I would move that we suspend the rules to permit debate on the motion to table.
Okay, so, under Robert's rules, anyone can move to suspend Robert's rules. That would take a second and then a majority vote, and you have to, you have to address that before you can go to the motion to table. So if there is a second, you then can have discussion about suspension and then vote on that motion, assuming it is seconded. So at this time, you have to ask for a second.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we have a motion for minutes taking. We have a motion now to suspend Robert's Rules of Order.
Correct.
And tabling. For discussion.
Well, not, not the table, just to suspend Robert's Rules of Order for the purposes of discussing the motion to table.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, one more time for clarity, it's for the discussion to table, correct? Okay. And I second that in case anybody has any discussion to be had. It's only fair that everybody have that opportunity. So I do second that for that reason.
For suspending Robert Schul's order.
To have a discussion, yes.
So the discussion at this time is whether to suspend Robert's rules, not on the motion to table.
Yes, Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President.
Thank you, President Mays, and I fully understand your second. I think a discussion is always a good thing. This board agrees in our board handbook to follow Robert Schul's orders. It is a way to present decorum, it's a way to present a set structure for this board to be able to follow. We've used Robert Rule's order as long as I've been on this board. I think it's disingenuous to suspend the rules we follow because it's not going the way you want to go. I will not be voting, I will not be voting to suspend Robert Schul's order.
And so now we vote on that, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Okay, so we've had discussion, so now we're voting to suspend or not to suspend?
If there's no further discussion.
I'd like to have discussion.
I see no further discussion. Yes, Mr. Chapa?
Yes, I would like to discuss my motion. Do I have the floor?
Yeah, which motion, Mr. Chapa?
The motion to suspend the rules to permit discussion on the motion to table.
Okay. Yeah.
Do I have the floor?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I have been accused now over the last several minutes of making disingenuous arguments and disrupting the work of the board that apparently Mr. Hogg and Mr. Reich have been doing for over a decade. I'm not quite sure what work they're referring to, because I've always understood that work to include a priority of local governance and local control, and having the authority to address local conditions on the ground here in Arlington. In fact, that's been in our legislative agenda, at least as long as I've been on the board. And I would also note, despite, as, as Mr. Hogg well knows, FFA scholar that he is, that Robert's rules themselves provide for a suspension of the rules in certain circumstances, and this is one of them. I'm not asking for a total suspension of the rules for the rest of the meeting. I recognize that the rules govern the decorum of the meeting and provide a guide, guidelines for controlling the scope of our debate. All I am asking is to have discussion on Ms. Fowler's motion to table, which normal circumstances would say is not debatable, but I think these issues are incredibly important, and I think that they're worthy of debate, instead of resorting to a procedural tool to end discussion on this issue before all, not only all board members have been heard, but before we can even respond to some of the points that were raised by Dr. Reich and Mr. Hogg. And so I, you know, in the interest of, of not being cut off later, you know what I didn't hear? In Dr. Reich or Mr. Hogg's responses to, to me, I didn't hear them mention a single time how this pandemic is going to affect our students and staff. I heard a lot of discussion, excuse me, Mr. Hogg, I heard a lot of discussion about legal risk, about oath to follow the laws. I heard a lot of discussion about what Dr. Reich and Mr. Hogg have done over the last few years to do apparently something that my concerns for children is in opposition to, having explained what that is. And let me just.
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chapa, hold on one second, I'm listening to Mr. Eichelbaum.
When a board member requests a point of order, that, that supersedes whatever is happening at the time. Depending on your ruling on the point of order, it may go back to Mr. Chapa. But first, a board member is entitled to a point of order.
Okay, so, Mr. Chapa, hold on, Mr. Hogg, I will let you speak, and then we can return to Mr. Chapa. It's okay, I got you.
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Chapa is going way beyond Robert Schul's order and the suspension. The motion that is on the table is about suspending the orders. He is going back to the original motion to discuss what myself and Dr. Reich brought up after his discussion. So I, I think we are not following what the motion is on the table of suspending the orders, and I think I would say, seek legal advice of Mr. Eichelbaum as our, in essence, parliamentarian to help us through Robert Schul's order.
Madam President, if you find that the discussion is going beyond the motion to suspend, then you should rule it out of order and ask the person to go back onto topic or end their time.
Mr. Chapa, would you like to continue on this motion currently?
Yes, President Mays, I would. So I, the reason I'm making these points is, is there have been a lot of things said, and, and quite frankly, a lot of things, I think, that were hurtful to me that were said, that if the motion to table is, is, you know, voted on, that I won't have the opportunity to respond to. And that is, I was just giving some examples of those. There are, are many worthy things at issue with my motion to authorize the school district to, at some point in the future, if necessary, take legal action. And I would, I would add that to take legal action on a right that I think everybody agrees you already have, exists, and so I'm, all I'm asking for is that we have a fulsome discussion and not pre-termit discussion on something that is of utmost importance to the community. We have received literally- We have received literally hundreds, if not a thousand emails on this in the last week and a half, and I just don't think it is appropriate to essentially cut off debate on this issue.
Okay. So...
No other discussion?
I'm sorry, what did you ask?
If there is no other discussion, you would then take a vote on the motion?
To suspend.
To suspend.
Yes. Mr. Wilbanks?
So, just to be clear, my, my colleague is not asking to suspend because he wants to get rid of Robert's rules. He wants to simply be able to debate it. With Ms. Fowler's motion to table, that would preclude discussion on the topic. And so, by suspending the rules, it's just allowing us to, to further discuss this topic as to the merits of whether to table or to move forward with the first motion.
If that was a question, that's correct.
Yeah, I think that was a question. Okay, I, I don't see any other comments. So at this time, we are voting to suspend Robert's rules of order. Okay, so we will do a roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
I vote no.
Mr. Wilbanks?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
I vote no.
Mr. Hogg?
Booey Hogg, I vote no.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote no.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chapa?
Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Okay, so we've got three yeses and four nos, so the motion passes to suspend.
No.
No.
No, it fails to suspend, it was three to four.
Right. Isn't that what it was?
So that means that it doesn't, it's not suspended, and we are now on the motion to table.
Correct, correct. So now we are back to the motion to table. Okay? And there is no discussion, so at this time, we will vote, roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
I vote yes.
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Booey Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote no.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote no.
Okay, so we have two nos and five yeses, so motion passes to table. Next on the agenda is a discussion action item, COVID-19 school operations update.
Thank you.
Dr. Kovasos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this evening we bring a brief school operations update, and Dr. Hill will take us through that update to our protocols and things related to that. So, Dr. Hill?
Thank you. Good evening, President Mays, board members, and Dr. Kovasos. We're going to just go through a brief school operations update. And so, just an overview, what we'll be covering is countywide conditions, existing protocols that are in place, recommended additional protocol, our processes that we have in place for current notifications and positive cases, mitigation efforts, COVID-19 testing, and AISD cases as of end of the day today, and we'll end with some vaccination opportunities that are available in the community. So here are just a snapshot of Tarrant County statistics on their dashboard as of today. We pulled this down and brought it for at least observation, and you'll see there the community spread is extremely, is high, relatively high. The positivity rate is another opportunity that we looked at for positive cases, and it's at around 20% as of today. Just to cope, COVID-19 protocols that we currently have in place that are working in our campuses, regular hand washing, routine sanitizing and cleaning of classrooms, offices, and school buses and other community spaces, exclusion of positive cases, and if they're staff members, then they would be on the COVID-19 leave for employees, and exclusion of symptomatic individuals, and testing available to those symptomatic individuals as well. One of the additional protocols that we recommend is contact tracing if we have a confirmed case within our school buildings or within a district facility. And the rationale is simply that allows for more specific notification of close contacts so that they can monitor symptoms and then get the appropriate attention that's necessary. When we have a positive case, we are going to be excluding those individuals for 10 days. We'll be posting that notification on our dashboard, we'll be notifying those close contacts, notifying appropriate state agencies, and recommending the contacts monitor their symptoms and then seek that medical, medical attention, or get tested if necessary. We also will be excusing student absences and allowing them to make up the work. Staff absences, again, will be coded as COVID-19 leave and not be charged to their, to their personal leave. Again, this is 10 calendar days for staff members. And then they will be able to return to work from isolation and quarantine after 10 days and after they're symptom-free. Mitigation efforts that we have on camp, on campuses and in our departments and other facilities now, PPE is available, that's masks, as hand sanitizers, routine hand washing, routine cleaning of classrooms and school buses, targeted cleaning where necessary. We're encouraging symptomatic individuals to stay home, and we continue to partner with other providers to provide vaccine opportunities for students and for families. Just a little bit about our COVID-19 testing that we have, we use a Binexx Now antigen test. It's a shallow nasal swab, and the results are there within 15 minutes. And we have that clinic that's located at 604 New York Avenue, and it's open from 9:00 to 2:00. Appointments available, and we do have appointments that are early for staff so that they can have those appointments and get those results as soon as possible. As of today, COVID-19 testing through the AISD clinic, we have administered 76 tests to students and staff. 15 of those tests were positive, that includes students and staff, and we continue to schedule those tests. We've got several that are scheduled for tomorrow and into next week as well. COVID-19 cases from the first day of school through the 5:00 today, and our dashboard updates every day at 5:00. We have 187 total cases that have been reported across the district, 28 staff members, 156 student positive cases, and three visitors that have visited our facilities and then let us know that they've tested positive at some specific point. Again, this dashboard updates each day at 5:00 p.m., and there's more, much more details on locations and things like that on the dashboard. There are COVID-19 vaccine opportunities here in Arlington at the Arlington Fire Department, 2920 South Cooper, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:00, and that's available for the community. Also, there is one tomorrow at the MedStar Vaccine Clinic on 2900 Altamere Drive in Fort Worth, from 10:00 to 4:00, and that's available for our community. So the recommendation from the administration is that the board approve the contact tracing and be added to the protocols that we already have in place. That concludes the presentation, and we'll be to answer any questions or receive any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, for that presentation. We do have some questions. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Hill, I was just wondering about, you know, sometimes in high school, absences count against students, and they have to take finals. Have we thought about what we're going to do about that and not, not penalizing students if they have COVID, and then they'd have to take finals?
Yeah, we've had, talked about that internally, we haven't landed on it yet. We were kind of reverting back to some of the discussions we had this past year, and wanted to make sure that we're consistent with how we are implementing that, so.
Okay, so, so we don't know yet?
At this point, there's no final decision that's been made, but there's been discussion on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McMorrow?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Can you elaborate a little bit more on what contact tracing will look like? Because I know that that can mean a lot of things, and I know, you know, what it meant for last year. Then on August 5th, when we voted unanimously to go with our current protocols, what exactly would that look like that differs from our current plan?
So, contact tracing and the way we've used it in the past is that if there is a lab confirmed positive case, then we would go back to any, any individual, student or staff, that was within a certain amount of feet for a certain time period of that lab confirmed individual, that person would be considered a contact. And then we would not be isolating those people. We would just be notifying them that, hey, you've been a close contact, watch your symptoms, notifying the individuals and their parents if they're students. You've been in contact with a COVID-positive individual, watch your symptoms, and things of that nature.
Okay, so it would be mainly for monitoring purposes?
Unless those individuals become symptomatic.
I see.
And if they become symptomatic, then we're looking for exclusion.
I see, thank you.
I would just add, President Mays, that it also allows for more precise notification of individuals in our schools about close contact versus a grade level or a classroom.
Yes.
This is more precise, so that if you are close contact, we'll let you know.
Mr. Hogg?
It's probably because I've spoken too much, President Mays, I get it, I get, I understand it when microphones stop working, and I will keep this short. Stop laughing, Dr. Reich, that I've spoken too much tonight. Mrs. McMorrow, thank you for that question, because I have the same question on contact tracing. This is one item I do think is a fine protocol. We, we changed our protocols on the 5th to, I don't want to say the word "normal." A lot of these protocols we have in place, hand washing, things are things that should be normally done in the classroom every single day, constantly. I have a second grader, I have a kindergartner. I worry about my kids all the time on this. When she was in kindergarten, pre-COVID, there's germs that are passed. Son of two teachers, husband of a teacher, I get it. So those are protocols that need to be in there. Contact tracing at first, I didn't think it was relevant. I do think parents want to know when that happens, and then they can make the choice of what they do. And if, following symptoms and following that, I do think it is the right option. I do think, let me ask, who is doing? Because contact tracing requires a lot of staff time, so can I ask? I heard one of the nurses say they were doing it earlier. Do we have extra support for them on contact tracing?
Well, and we'll kind of revert back to the way we ended last year, and that is because TEA requires us to have a COVID contact on every campus, a lead, if you will. And so we've asked that designated the school nurse to be that person. Now, the school nurse doesn't do it all, but she, he or she would coordinate the efforts to make sure that it happens.
Oh, she leads it, or she or he, you'll use that. Okay, I, I think these protocols that we are proposing that we continue from the 5th and adding contact tracing is the right move for this board tonight.
I do not see any other light. This is a discussion action item.
President Mays?
Yes, Mr. Chapa? Yes, please.
I am, I'm glad that we are looking at doing the contact tracing. I know it's very difficult in this environment when we may have 20 to 30 kids in a small room, and they're wearing, they're not wearing masks like they were last year. And so, under the contact tracing protocols we had in place last year, yes, it was by time and duration, and those were factors that were considered, because they were all wearing masks last year. And most of our campuses were only half-full, so it was easy to socially distance at those campuses. So now we're facing the exact opposite situation, where we've essentially resumed normal operations, but we still would like to contact trace. I think that's going to be, I mean, that's something that we absolutely should do, but under the definitions and, and protocols that we followed last year, a single positive case in a classroom is likely going to be resulting in the entire classroom being deemed a close contact. So, it is the right thing to do. I would also, again, reiterate my request that I made at the last meeting that the notification be made as granularly as possible that the students have been in close contacts. But in light of the, the discussion that I had earlier, that we are not prohibited from considering masking requirements, I would move at this time that the board reinstate the masking protocols and procedures that were in place last year.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So... Mr.? Yeah, Mr. Chapa, you did make a motion, correct?
Yes, President Mays, I did.
Is there a second to Mr. Chapa's motion? Mr. Wilbanks?
I second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, President Mays, I would like to have discussion.
Okay, you've got the mic.
Thank you, President Mays. This is not a motion that I make lightly. I have heard from hundreds of people that I respect a great deal over the last week or so, who have very conflicting opinions on this issue, including members of my own family. As an attorney, I am a litigator. I frequently, I do appellate law a lot, and that means I have to research legal authorities. And frequently, when I'm working on a case, the answer to a legal issue isn't clear. There are sometimes, you know, miraculous times where all the courts agree what the answer is on a law, and then there are other times where courts with very smart people on them look at the same laws and the same court precedents, and they reach different conclusions. And so it's sometimes a case where I have to go look at a legal issue, and I find that there are 10 courts on one side, and one court has decided it differently. And I think that's the situation that we're facing here with the issue of masks. There is, i- i- it is not, it would not be fair to say that there is not some authority to support some of the arguments that were made tonight. But just because there's some authority doesn't mean that that is the weight of authority. If I were to advise one of my clients to proceed in court on an issue where only one court in the whole country had ruled that way, and not acknowledged that every other court had ruled that way, I would be doing my client wrong. And I think in this situation, the overwhelming medical evidence, the emails sent from Arlington Memorial Hospital doctors and ICU nurses, medical authorities from all across the country, have said that masking is one of the most important, the second most important tool that we have in mitigating community spread. And I am a lawyer, I'm not a doctor. And in my position, I go with the weight of authority. And here, I think the weight of authority is overwhelming, beyond vaccination, which half of our kids don't have the opportunity to get yet, including all three of mine. The next best thing we can do is to ask that people, for a temporary time, wear masks. We had students do this all last year, and despite many of the things that were said tonight about how awful it would be for students to wear masks, we just did not see those issues last year on the whole. And we actually had a process for many, the people saying that there are students that can't wear masks. We exempted several students from wearing masks last year because they had legitimate medical issues. That, I'm sure that would be the case again this year. And so what I would like to do is, for a few weeks, us use the next most important tool that we have, for half of our students, the only tool, most effective tool that we have, in addition to the other protocols that were recommended tonight, to enhance the safety for our kids, because the overriding goal for me is that we keep our schools open. We weren't able to do that last year, but this year we were able to. But the COVID situation is changing very rapidly, and we're sort of at an inflection point. Again, if I am wrong, then, and we do mask, I think people will wear something they wore almost most, almost all of last year for a few more weeks, until we see what Delta's doing. Because the data that was presented by Dr. Hill is not encouraging. A lot of those lines, and those are, that's data from Tarrant County, are almost vertical. And I know, I don't want to return to the discussion we had about the lawsuit, but it's a point that Mr. Hogg did bring up then, I believe it was Mr. Hogg, or maybe it was Mr. Reich, Dr. Reich? Let's see. Oh, it was Dr. Reich. He asked, he said that we didn't have any discreet really recommendations from Tarrant County Public Health, but we do. The, the individuals in Tarrant County Public Health have been saying for at least a week now that, that schools should, that people should wear masks. They've been making Facebook posts encouraging the same. So, I think that the overwhelming consensus of medical authorities both here and across the country is that masking is something that we should do if we want to keep our schools open. And I think, as much as I don't like masks, I know my kids don't like them, I believe that we have a personal responsibility for ourselves and the health of others. And if masking will keep other people from getting the virus and increasing the spread, we can get past this surge, and we can keep our schools open. I think that's something everybody that's there in that room and myself agree on, is we want schools to be open. And in my opinion, if we don't do masks, we have a much less chance, a much reduced chance of, of being able to do that. There have been districts in Texas, several rural districts where the spread is not nearly as great as, as it is here, that have already had to close classes and campuses because of the virus. It's played out in several different areas across the country, where classes opened before now. So, I, I don't want to come across, and I think I've been unfairly caricatured as somebody who thinks we should all go back into lockdown, or go live in a hole somewhere. But my position from the beginning is that we have to, we have an obligation to other people to stop the community spread, so we are all better off. And for me, that's been getting vaccinated, and now during the surge, I'm wearing a mask again. I didn't wear it this summer when the rates were incredibly low, almost pre-COVID low. I was fully vaccinated, and the CDC guidance didn't recommend it. But things have changed, the virus is not a static thing, it's been the same since March 2020. There were several speakers earlier tonight that have discussed how things have gone up and have gone down, and advice has changed. But this is where we are now, and we do have a better understanding. And that understanding suggests to me that we do use this tool to keep our schools open. And I don't think it would be fair to our kids to not take that step. And I just want to have a, one final point, which is, we also have a duty to promote student health and welfare across the district. And I understand that there are differing opinions on this issue, and that, those differing opinions show up in the form of students showing up to our schools at varying rates of masking up while it's recommended. And so on some campuses, the vast majority of students are wearing masks. But there are some campuses in this district where quite a few students, if not the majority of students, are not wearing masks. And to me, that promotes an inequality within this district of the level of health and welfare that we provide to our students. And I cannot in good conscience allow that to continue going forward, where some students are safer than others just because of where they live in the city. And so I would strongly recommend that we adopt a masking requirement for a temporary duration, happy to put a time limit on it, just to see where we go in the next few weeks and try to keep our schools open. And again, the governor's order tonight, the Texas Supreme Court denied his motion for emergency relief. That order in Austin is valid. The governor's authority has been suspended with respect to forcing school districts to not take steps like this to protect our community. And that is the law. There's been a lot of discussion of me following, or others following their oath to obey the law. I am obeying the law. The governor's board, the governor's executive order is void for right now. That may change at some point in the future, but I am following my oath to the Constitution, because that is not the law today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, thank you, Mr. Chapa. I don't know Mr. Chapa's beliefs, but I think this is about belief. No one has once said you can't wear a mask. No one has once said that. I was in my children's school, dropping my kindergartner and my second grader off, and multiple ones over here. I think three of us have young children in this district, Mr. Chapa, Ms. McMurro, and myself. The rest of you have had children go through this district pretty recently. So we all understand, we all worry about our kids' safety. There's nothing more important than children's safety. So when people say you're not worried about the safety of children, are you kidding me? There's nothing I'd do more important than the safety of my two daughters. Nothing. The governor set rules. If we go with this motion, I would like to ask, if we are sued, and each board member could be facing a fine, because the Attorney General has made it very clear, he will go after any school district, public university, or local government official that decides to defy the order will be taken to court. So this temporary restraining order is now, let's just say, the Supreme Court hypothetically, and I hate playing hypotheticals, will the district defend any board member that is potentially sued by the Attorney General?
Is that a rhetorical, or are you asking?
No, I'm asking Mr. Eckelbaum.
Okay, Mr. Eckelbaum?
With respect to insurance, that would be a call for our insurance company. However, the school district can choose to defend trustees and would if they're acting in their official capacity, but cannot if it's a criminal charge. Now, the discussion has always been that the $1,000 fine, all of that is civil, it is not criminal. So if it's civil, then the school district would be defended, as would be the trustees.
And with that, Mr. Eckelbaum, is it also you would defend the superintendent who risked potentially losing his superintendent certification if you defy the governor's order?
If the school board tells me to, I represent the district.
And, Mr. Eckelbaum, there's also some up in the air of, could principals at each campus be held responsible for defying the governor's order?
I have not heard that yet.
But we would, the district legal would defend them, most likely, correct?
They absolutely would defend them, because they would be following school board policy. And they're required, as by the way, would the superintendent be, to follow school board policy. So that's probably why, and I would hope, you would choose to defend the superintendent also.
Perfect, that's what I needed to know, thank you, and put the risk, and, once again, I think it goes back to, the attorneys are the ones who benefit in this scenario. When we talk about masking, last year, I think we had the discussion, and one of my colleagues... Sure, Mr. Hill. I don't think I have a specific question. And, Mr. Hill, let me just say, thank you, you have one of the most difficult jobs in this district. It is an unthinkable position. You handle the nitty-gritty stuff maybe no one else wants in this district, and I appreciate boundary changes, you get all these things. And I just wanted to say thank you for the work you do, because you've had to lead a lot of this, and take on, and get a lot of opinions, and there's a lot of opinions on this. So I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege and say thank you for the work you're doing, because it's not gone unnoticed. So I appreciate you for that. We're coming up also on a virtual option later on in the agenda, which I think is a good idea, to be able to provide a limited group for those parents who need a virtual option. Because the reality is, this is split, and there are people that are truly afraid, and I get it. And I'm sure some of my colleagues, because last year, I think we had a discussion, and one of my colleagues surprised us and added two more weeks of virtual on there, which I adamantly opposed and fought and voted no against. So I have a feeling I'd probably hear from more people.
I have a point of order.
Mr. Chapa? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays, I just want to clarify that the vote last September was by five trustees, not just one.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, repeat it one more time, Mr. Chapa?
I just want to clarify that Mr. Hogg's correct statement about the vote of the board last year is, was incorrect on the numbers. It was actually five trustees that voted in favor of that, not just one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hogg?
Great, yeah, sure. Five trustees voted for it. Myself and another trustee voted against it to the extension of that. But my point of that whole thing, after that use of time, was I probably hear from more of those parents than those five trustees who voted to extend it. I hear from more of those parents whose children are suffering. I hear from those parents who have tried, their students have tried to commit suicide. They have those items. And those are real, you have to take both groups into account. You can't just look at this in one silo. You have to look at it from the broad perspective. Some comments were made about, we had masks across the board last year. Well, we didn't. I think I had to fight last year for pre-K and kindergarten to not have mandatory mask requirements, and we didn't. We did the exact same thing we're doing this year for pre-K and kindergarten. And I think staff's discussion was, we don't want those young men and women and young learners starting their school education off with that. And we didn't have a spike higher than other grades in pre-K and kindergarten last year. So we didn't have all students in masks last year, to follow up on that. There's lots of doctors that say yes to this, there's also some that don't. There's a lot of medical professionals, science is an inexact art, and I commend our doctors, and I take it into account. The Tarrant County Health Department could issue emergency items, and they haven't? Are we going to ban students from playing volleyball? I, as someone who wrestled, I was terrible at wrestling in high school, better at football and track and field and ag. But we're going to allow kids to wrestle without masks? So when do we go, how far do we go on that? Oh, so we do this, well, the city hasn't done anything, City of Fort Worth hasn't done anything, the county hasn't done anything, so we're the only ones? Last year, all I heard was, these students are all going, we're requiring this, and I think the protocols we took last year at that time was the ripe moment. But students are meeting up outside of school, you look at that, I looked through campuses, I looked through all of social media this week, and I see this, and 50, 60% are probably wearing masks right now. And like everything, we've all said, this is the most split item we've ever seen in all my years on this board, and it really is. You can't deny that from where it is, from what it is. So if we're doing that, and I, as you can't tell, I totally oppose this, why are we just allowing masks? Why aren't you requiring N95s? Because if you talk about the efficiency ratings, or however you pronounce it, efficacy, thank you, Dr. Reich, for that, I butchered that word 100 times, I think. You know, they talk about N95s have like a 77% rating, cloth masks are like 14%, gators are like 7% or 4% if you look at some of those studies. Well, why are we, why are we not requiring, if you're talking safety, it makes me think this is about compliance and not safety, is what it is. I look at HEB, I look at Mansfield, I look at Arlington Classics, I look at Newman, I look at International Leadership of Texas, Texas Leadership, Uplift Summit, J. M. So, Great Hearts, all the schools, public schools in Arlington that are here, and we would be the only ones? I just, we're now not suing the governor, we're bringing it back up, and I love Robert Schul's orders, I always love voting on motions, and I will love voting against this one.
Mr. Willbanks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Mr. Hogg. This is a very split, rot decision, and one not to be made lightly, and a lot of care needs to go into this. I am all for individual liberties. Government, the government's best, government's least. However, there are limits to our individual freedoms. I learned at an early age that I can't play the red hot chili peppers when I lived in a duplex at 24 on my stereo, because it impeded the peace and quiet of my neighbors. I, we have rules when our individual, when we come in close quarters and our individual freedoms potentially harm others. That's why we have rules of the road to drive on freeways. But I still stand by my conviction that rules are the exception, we all have individual freedoms. But this virus and this Delta variant are dangerous, and it's affecting our children. We have hospitals at capacity and doctors and nurses calling me, pleading with us to do the right thing and help save lives. Now, I wear a mask, but it's not necessarily to protect me, it's to protect others if I were sick. Masks are effective. We, why do we know this? Couple of ways. Last year, we had, we were praised by our COVID protocols. We had very little to no spread within our schools. Why? Because we did the contact tracing, we did the distancing, and kids wore masks. But they still worked, no matter how improperly they were, so...
Y'all let him speak, please. Y'all had an opportunity.
So how else do I know? I had numerous nurses from hospitals across this district that had conversations with me, that were, again, pleading with us to input masks. One of them told me this, she was like, it's a specious argument to claim that masks don't work. How do I know, she said? Because for a year and a half, I've been working in this hospital at close range with COVID victims, and my PPE saved me until we had a virus. Masks and PPE work. And I, like my colleague, the last thing I want is for parents to keep their kids at home because they don't feel safe. Because we know we have a heavy lift, and we need those kids in person as much as possible in those classrooms. So where they need to be, right now, with our positivity rate climbing well above 21%, and climbing, and our hospitalizations climbing, and doctors saying we're heading for a cliff, we need, we owe it to this community, and more specifically to our students and our staff and their extended families, to do the right thing, and for a limited time, until this spike goes over, be that three weeks, six weeks, or a month. I don't know what the timeframe is, but I'm all, like my colleague proposed, willing to implement a mask mandate as long as it's time-bound, and we revisit it a short time-bound, so we can revisit it, and remove it as soon as possible, as soon as the numbers tell us we can. The other points I want to make is, you know, on individual liberties, I had a lot of friends and contacts across this district contact me. There were numerous families that were once anti-mask, and were hoping that we'd be in person. One of my neighbors, who have three kids in the district, they, they have one 11-year-old that was not vaccinated, but everyone else in the household was vaccinated. They were out over a week, knocked out, even though they were vaccinated with the COVID, with the Delta variant. And she changed her mind and pleaded with me, this is not what I want anyone else to go through. Please institute what's best for our students. So this is a hard decision, but it's the right decision. I'm going to quote, since I'm a seventh-generation Texan, I'm going to quote the great Sam Houston, who said, "Do right and risk consequences." And I'm willing to risk the consequences to do right by the children and the staff and the extended families in our community here in Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. Mrs. McMurro?
Make no mistake, as an individual, I am concerned about the Delta variant. I'm reading every email, listening to every voice, and checking Tarrant County data and our Arlington ISD data dashboard when I wake up each morning, and again before I go to sleep each night. My own son's pediatrician has joined over 160 now, Cook Children's physicians warning against the new strand and encouraging precautions, many of those which we've already adopted. Things are changing by the day, and just as we learn from the valedictorian speeches that are made graduations, being built to last means being built to adapt. If we don't maintain, we as trustees don't maintain an open heart, an open mind during all, throughout all circumstances, we shouldn't be in this position. When I brought my son to his, who is also a second grader, to his new teacher at Sneak-a-Peak last week, some students were in masks, others weren't, some staff members were wearing masks, others weren't. I did ask my son to wear a mask for the first time in a very long time, and to my surprise, he didn't put up much of a fight. But that's just it, I'm his mother. Defying the governor's executive order and asking our teachers and administrators to flip the switch on our families and require masks again, especially with the first day of school already passed us, and learning that there has been unnecessary pressure, tension, and in one case, outside of AISD, an assault on our teachers over mask-wearing, opens up so many more liabilities for our schools, which should be a place of peace, a place of mutual respect, a place of learning, and yes, a place of safety. Not to mention, we do not have solid local or legal authority to make this decision, as we've stated tonight. Some larger neighboring school districts are attempting to defy the statewide executive order, but their plans are not effectively taking flight. I believe deep down that requiring masks, with all of the given variables, will in turn affect the functionality of our district and the well-being of our children in an even more adverse way than making masks a strong recommendation, rather than a strict requirement. Especially at this point in the game, I believe we will get more on board to consider masking up, especially our children who are unvaccinated, if we, amongst other effective protocols, encourage masks by consent rather than force. We have to look at the big picture when we strive for student learning and student safety, and we have to keep our eye on the how, not just the what of mitigating the spread. With that said, we must do our part as individuals, and this reaches far beyond our schools. A question often asked to hint at Mayor A question often asked to hint at marital advice is, do you care more about being right or being happy? Today, we really need to look within ourselves and ask ourselves, do we care more about being right or being healthy? I truly see and respect all perspectives regarding masks in schools. But as long as we vow to serve all families and employees of Arlington ISD, I truly believe we must honor their choices. Choices also mean offering a virtual option for virtual instruction for our students who are too young to be vaccinated. So long as this does not mean concurrent in-person instruction for our teachers who lead this charge, I am interested in pursuing this as a temporary offering. All students should feel comfortable, loved, and safe when they are learning. And we do have the tools and more importantly, the people to make this happen. And no matter our stance on masks, it's time to find it within ourselves, to pull together as a community so our children don't become victims of our division any more than they already have. We can beat this virus. And I humbly ask everyone watching and everyone in this room that we do it together for the sake of our kids. We have to care more about being healthy than being right, especially when it comes to them. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Dr. Reich.
Oh, thank you, President Mays. Well said, Ms. McMurro. I appreciate those comments. Several talking points, I've been kind of jotting them down here, so I'll try to get through them pretty quickly. I'll preface this with, over the past week and a half, I've had citizens declare me a masker and an anti-masker. The community is divided. And one of the things that I believe that I haven't, I haven't been labeled accurately, I'm not an anti-masker. I need to put that out there. I am a healthcare professional. There is some data that says masking can be a mitigating factor. The healthcare community, there's many that also have data to support that the masking doesn't necessarily work as the end-all be-all. Mr. Chapa stated it. It's perhaps number two behind vaccinations. My focus in all of this over the, really since our last board meeting, two weeks ago, we, we roll back to last week and all of a sudden, there was discussion of having an emergency meeting about this very topic. I was shocked by it. And as somebody, as I've previously stated, looking for data-driven decisions, I thought, what, what has changed? The only thing that changed at that point was districts to our East and West decided to, hey, we're going to mandate, we're going to do this no matter what. And so of course, there's a lot of people in the community that share those beliefs, people on this board that share those beliefs, hey, yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. It's the right thing to do. And I don't criticize anybody here in this room, my colleagues on the dais for having a different set of values than mine. I do my best to listen and learn from everybody in all viewpoints and weigh that against data, weigh that against unintended consequence and the forest for the trees. And what I have seen is that, yes, healthcare professionals are exhausted. I'm the closest that we have to an MD on this board. I'm a farm D, doctor of pharmacy. I have many friends in the healthcare system around here, around the state, around the nation. They are beat. They are walking away. COVID is no joke. Those that have worked so tirelessly, they are appropriately garbed in appropriate PPE, which is more towards the N95 mask and properly fitted. That's what's keeping them going and keeping them from catching COVID. So that's just a point to bring up. The point of clarification to Mr. Chapa, what I was specifically regarding Tarrant County Public Health, looking for morbidity mortality data. Those in the age population, 2 to 11s, that don't have the choice right now, that's what I'm concerned with. They're, they're exposed. We've all had our choice. Some have chosen to be vaccinated, some have chosen not to. And we can argue all day long about that's why we're here and yada, yada. At the end of the day, 12 and up have had the opportunity. This virus isn't going away. We have to learn to live with it. Delta variant is one, there's more coming. This thing has crossed over lines. This is going to be, in my opinion, just like a flu and an RSV. It's just what it is. I'm not saying I wouldn't sit up here on this dais and make that call to mandate masks at some point. And let me be clear about that. It's about the data. And in that data set, in that population, I am really concerned about that morbidity mortality data. The Delta variant has a huge transmissibility rate. That's, that's a given. That has not been refuted. So to me, it's not a question of if necessarily, more likely when, people are going to be infected, our children in that age population. But out of that likely large N number, how many of them, how sick are they getting? Are they ending up in the hospital for more than an overnight stay? How many of that population are ending up in an ICU and potential ventilator? And sadly, yes, how many of those are ending up dying? Nobody wants this. Nobody wants to talk about this. That's the reality. That data is missing. That data is not there. I'm not saying it won't be there. But at this point in time, I can't up here in good conscience vote for something that there's not substantial data to support. We have built over a decade of building data-driven decisions in this district. It was met with huge resistance when I, as a trustee, within the first three or four meetings in as a trustee, was the first one to say data-driven decisions. And I got chastised over it. And guess what? Here we are now. Everybody's focused on data. So why would we change course? I'm missing that data set. It has not come. That's what I meant, Mr. Chapa. That has been missing from Tarrant County Public Health. That has been missing from our, our city medical director. And that, that's a concern to me. And I understand the plea from the healthcare professionals, the letters. And this is a statement. I appreciate the letters. And for the record, I have not received a letter from Arlington Memorial that Mr. Chapa referenced. I've, everybody's heard about the Cooks Children's letter in Fort Worth going to the superintendent of Fort Worth ISD. That letter didn't come to us. That letter didn't go to Tarrant County Public Health. That letter didn't go to all schools and all districts as a call. That letter didn't go to the governor. That's where it needs to go at this point. This is at a state level. It didn't happen. Why does it have to be, oh, let's have the ISDs rip each other apart and hash this out and have our communities hanging on by a thread and potentially unraveling? That's not what we're about. We are Arlington. We are better. We are much better than that. So I, I can't support that information as far as mandating at this point in time. That data set, that data set has to be compelling. I'm hopeful when it is provided in that subpopulation to us. If it's not compelling, it's not compelling. We don't have that data. We just don't. We can postulate and think all day long, oh, well, it's going to. We don't know. We don't know. So what I say in closing, and I know, Mr. Chapa, you're probably thinking, yeah, right at this point in time. And I, I'm sorry for even saying that, but I love each and every one of you as colleagues. We have been through the gauntlet, thick and thin. And we always have to vote our conscience at the end of the day. And as long as we can, and it is my hope that we continue with, passionate discussion is fine, but proper decorum, because we are the leaders of this district. We set the tenor and the tone and the example for everybody that is watching us, including our students. So no matter how this vote turns out, no matter how any vote turns out, we have to band together. We have to be unified. This is not going away. This is not the last time we're going to have to deal with some type of a COVID situation. We have to learn to live with this. And I, it is my hope and my prayer that we all can do that and not have this erode our unity and trust for one another's abilities and intellects and beliefs and decisions that we make based on hearing objectively everybody's thoughts and opinions. That is most important, that that's how we proceed in life as being good humans. And if we can do that and demonstrate that through this hardest of times that we've been through, maybe there's some hope for our country that is ridiculously divided and polarized. We owe it to our children to be better. Thank you.
So if I could just say, one reason for my vote earlier, Dr. Reich, was for exactly what you said. We need to be able to have a discussion. I mean, we're, we're board members. This is how we have our discussion is through our meetings. So we need to be able to allow everybody to have an opportunity to make a discussion and not be cut off by any type of grandstanding, by any type of, you know, changes or, or things that can be done to where not everybody can speak. I want everyone to have an opportunity to have something to say, the same way I would like everybody to be able to come to the microphone and express what your thoughts and your opinions are. I have read every single email, as Ms. McMurro said. May not have responded. I've tried. I can't keep up. There's so many. But I have read every single one. My job, my responsibility is to take the information from the community, to take the information from our staff, to take information from our students who are being impacted, and take that information and study it. Look at both sides and study it. If we can't make a decision that's going to satisfy everybody, what I would like everybody to know is that the decision and the way that I would vote would start first and only, what is in the best interest of our students? Because that's what this position is. Nothing else, nothing political, nothing else. Our students may not make a decision that everybody is happy with. That's going to happen. And that's happening all over the world. So it's not just specific just to AISD. I do want to say that local control, to me, to members on this board, past boards that have gone to Austin, legislative, taken time off of work to advocate for local control. And the control locally that I want to have is from the input from the community, not just from what I want. So being able to have local control, in my opinion, was important to everybody on this board. Before we take our vote, I also want to say that, at the end of the day, as long as I am sitting in this seat, I am advocating for students. That's my job and that's my responsibility, is to advocate for students. Always have, always will, as long as I'm in this position. And that's for every child. That's for your child. That's for my children who are in the district, for anybody's child. So everybody has different opinions and that is fine. I completely respect that. I respect your opinion as I expect you to respect my opinion. And I'm speaking to everybody up here as well. So with that being said, I think everybody this time has had an opportunity to express their thoughts and feelings. As of now, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Chapa, second by Mr. Will Banks, to add mandating masks to the current protocols. Okay? I see no other discussion. Yes, ma'am? Okay. Justin, is that your accurate motion for the minutes?
I couldn't hear.
Ms. Benjamin, can you repeat so we can clarify that, this motion?
Motion was by Mr. Chapa, second by Mr. Will Banks, that the board reinstate the masking protocols and procedures that were in place last year.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So we will roll call vote as we have all this evening. Dr. Reich?
I vote no.
Mr. Will Banks?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
I vote no.
Mr. Hogg?
Wee Hogg, I vote no.
Keisha Mays, I vote no.
Sarah McMurro, I vote no.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Okay. Two, five. Motion fails. So now we're going back to our motion, which was made by? Okay. So we've had discussion. Is there any other discussion? If not, may I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Will Banks?
President Mays, I move to approve the temporary virtual, oh, whoops, no. That's yours.
Wrong, wrong time.
Yeah.
Would you like to make the motion, Mrs. Fowler? Okay. Mrs. Fowler?
President Mays, I move to approve adding contact tracing to the 2021, 2022 protocols.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. And Dr. Kavassos maybe goes with this, on that type of motion, that is also confirming our protocols we approved on the 5th, just adding the contact tracing to those.
That's correct. There are no other changes. The only recommended change is the contact tracing.
Just wanted to be fully clear. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, please vote, starting with Dr. Reich.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Wee Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, yes.
Justin Chapa, yes.
Okay. All present vote in the affirmative. That motion passes. Dr. Hill, thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda is also a discussion action item, consider COVID-19 virtual learning options. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring for board consideration, virtual learning opportunity for students in pre-K through sixth grade. I want to start by thanking our staff, through the leadership of Dr. Wertz, for working on this shift in our, in our, you know, offerings in a short amount of time. It has a lot of different complications, but our staff has done a great job. And I sincerely appreciate it, Dr. Wertz, and everyone that's been involved in this. So at this time, we'll bring a presentation for virtual learning as an opportunity for board consideration. Dr. Wertz?
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos. I'm here this evening to share with you some plans that we have in place for a temporary option for virtual learning for students and families who want to choose that, specifically for students in pre-K through six. I do want to take a minute just to reiterate what Dr. Cavassos said in terms of the team. It's been a really big effort in a very short amount of time, and I'm just very proud of the, the commitment they have towards our kids and providing options that sometimes come very last minute, so thank you for that. So there are a couple of models that are part of our temporary option that we'll be providing families, should it be approved. We do want to reiterate that it is specifically for pre-K through sixth grade students because the fact that they are ineligible for a COVID-19 vaccination. When we say pre-K through sixth grade, it's pre-K three, pre-K four, all the way through sixth grade. We want, we want to propose that we begin with an asynchronous self-guided solution that starts on Wednesday, August 25th. This, this option would only be available to the students who are enrolled in the virtual option, and the asynchronous period would go from Wednesday, August 25th until Friday, September 3rd. And the purpose of that asynchronous moment is for us to do the back staffing that's required to actually have non-concurrent instruction, which I'm about to talk about in terms of the synchronous model. So we just need the space to match up students with teachers, and that would allow for instruction to happen while that was occurring. For students who do enroll in this option, we will be hosting a parent information meeting. We're going to ask teachers to do that. We're going to provide some information where so teachers will have an opportunity to meet face-to-face with their families. For the asynchronous, we will be sending out information directly to families for how they access their courses and the process for doing that. We will be leveraging primarily Texas Home Learning Resources, which were provided by the Texas Education Agency during the asynchronous time period, and focused primarily on mathematics and literacy. Because this is, this is an asynchronous self-guided course, what we didn't want to do was inundate students with hours and hours and hours of self-guided work on the computer. And so we're going to focus on the two primary areas of content of literacy and mathematics, and provide them an opportunity to engage in science and social studies content that's embedded into the literacy component. We will also be providing them with physical activity recommendations. While we can't necessarily host P E in a, in a asynchronous environment, we do want to provide families with suggestions on what they can do to ensure their kids that are at home are engaged in physical activity. There will be no access to art or music during the asynchronous environment. This asynchronous component will be provided on Canvas. I'm going to show you some screenshots of what that actually will look like for families. And it, it has been district-led and district-designed, and so teachers that will be providing the online virtual program are not being, are not responsible for creating the asynchronous portion because they're busy teaching kids, as you know. And then last but not least, we will be supporting through a help desk, through the Teaching and Learning Department and the Office of School Leadership. Our facilitators and coordinators and specialists will be leading a face-to-face help desk option for families, which I'm going to show you in just a minute. So, let's see here. So this is what the asynchronous example will look like. When they get their letter, there will be a link that will take them directly to this Canvas course, and on the Canvas course, this landing page will give families an opportunity to either select the Spanish or the English version of the activities. One thing that's important to note, too, is pre-K through second grade typically have always engaged in seesaw, but because of the way seesaw functions in an asynchronous environment, it was not ideal. So we've made it very, very user-friendly and easy for families regardless of what age group. So families, a parent who's working to support their children aren't trying to navigate two systems. They're just going to navigate one, and it's pretty much spelled out, and I'll show you what it looks like. So assume you're a parent and you click on one of these buttons, you, you will land on the next page, which will break it down by day, specifically what your activity would be. So if Wednesday was the first day, you'd click on Wednesday, and you'd get a landing page that looks something like this. And it would take you to your, your activities, like what you can do in reading, what you can do in math with links, and it's almost like a checklist that parents would have just to engage kids in those activities, and to do the activities, you would just click on those, those buttons. If for some reason you get stuck, or you have a challenge, there will be a button on here which says help, which you can see. You click on that button, and it will drive you to this page, and there'll be a link there that families can click on, and when you click on that link, it will take you to a live Zoom meeting where there'll be someone moderating. And depending on which grade level you are, they will send you to a breakout room where there's a person that's in that breakout room that will be able to guide you and answer your questions specifically around whatever grade level you're struggling with or you have questions about. So it's just an opportunity for us to support families, but do so face-to-face through a virtual environment, and be really specific about who's helping you based on your grade level. And like I said, those touchpoints are being facilitated and moderated by coordinators and specialists from Teaching and Learning as well as from Office of School Leadership. Once those initial eight days are over, the, on the seventh, we will then lift up synchronous learning. And just for those that are listening possibly online, the difference between asynchronous and synchronous is asynchronous is self-guided, kind of on your own. Mom and dad can help you. On the synchronous side, there will be a teacher that'll be teaching you live. And this is a little different than last year, actually a lot different, because last year when we did concurrent, you had a teacher teaching a class, and you were kind of piped in on the side. This teacher will only be teaching you. That's on the other side of the camera, and you will, they will only be working with the kids that are on the computer. They will not have a class of students in front of there. All their students will be virtual. This will begin on September 7th, and it will be provided one, six weeks at a time. So about the third or fourth week of the six-week period, we'll send out another. It should, we decide that it needs to stay in place, we'll send out another intent to enroll to families so that they can tell us their option to enroll in the next six weeks for virtual. And the reason we do that is for some continuity of service and to make sure we're supporting students well. We found, and we've all learned, you know, from the last year, that when families and kids go back and forth, lots of learning is lost, and it's very difficult to maintain that learning. So we are asking families to pick an environment and stick with it for the course of the six-week period. If for some reason during that six weeks period, you don't want to do it anymore, at the end of the six weeks, you can re-enroll back. You can go back to the campus that you came from, back to your classroom, but not, not in the middle portion. There will be time requirements for students to be engaged and to receive attendance credit, and we are, I'm going to talk about that a little bit. But in, in essence, we are asking students to be engaged in the live instruction with their cameras on so that they are present, not the, the only difference between being in a synchronous environment and being live in front of your teacher is the fact that your teacher's looking at you through a camera. But we're going to ask kids to keep their cameras on so that they're present in class. In terms of dual-language and specialized programs, students that are in any of those programs, those, those families, they're welcome to apply to do, to participate in virtual. The difference is, is while they're in the virtual experience, it's a general ed experience, meaning the specialized program that they're, that they have enrolled in is not provided in the virtual environment. And this is primarily because there simply isn't a way to match the volume of students with teachers across the system who are applying, because I'm, I will share in a minute how we, how teachers are being selected. So if a, if a student, for example, participates in a specialized or dual-language program, and the parents prefer a virtual option now while it's temporarily being provided, they can enroll in the virtual environment. They'll get assigned to a virtual teacher. They'll do virtual school. When virtual ends, if they want to, they, if they want to go back, they can go immediately back to their program and pick up right where they left off. If a family chooses to extend their virtual experience beyond when the district offers it, they decide to go somewhere else for the rest of the year, and they want to come back to the school, they'll have to go back and reapply through the protocol. And this is primarily due to the, the fact that there is language development in a dual-language program. So kids who stay out of that program for an entire year while the rest of the cohort is moving along will have different language capacities and different language proficiency levels, which will make it very difficult for them to enter in at their age group and still be successful. If they can demonstrate their proficiency, we'll just put them right back. We will offer services for students who are enrolled in special education, dyslexia, G T, or bilingual E S L. If for some reason the, the child is receiving services in the special education program that is unable to be delivered in a virtual environment, we will either make arrangements, we will either invite that child to continue in the, in the face-to-face. If the parents are uncomfortable with that, we'll have to schedule compensatory services and make them up. As you know, we sent out an intent to enroll to all parents, starting on Tuesday, yesterday, it's no, two days ago, on August 17th, and it will remain open until Friday on the fifth, I'm sorry, Friday at 5:00 on the 20th. And during this enrollment process, we were, we, parents were provided very clear expectations and acknowledgements so that there was a, a true understanding about what it is that they were going to be experiencing if they chose to enroll. So I thought I would just share with you some of the acknowledgements. If you didn't have an opportunity to go through the actual survey, which if you're not, you don't have a child in the system, you may not have gotten it. But in essence, every, there is a landing page, and then there is an acknowledgement on each individual page. So every, the parents that were enrolling had to acknowledge each acknowledgement before they proceeded on to the next page, rather than having a single one where you scroll through it all and just hit one time. And the reason we did that was not to make it cumbersome. It was just to really promote clarity so that there was a lack of confusion on the parent's side. So one of the, these are four of the acknowledgements. We wanted to make sure that parents understood that they were only going to be receiving instruction in the core content areas and P E. We will be lifting up, just for parents, ideas and things they can do for, for visual arts, like art at their home, but there won't be a course taught from the teacher art. We also notated that, or asked them to acknowledge the fact that their child's participating in the, in the asynchronous environment for the first two weeks, and that following that period, their child would be reassigned to a virtual teacher that will be providing instruction to their child live on a daily basis. We also wanted parents to make sure that they understood their child was expected to log in and participate in all the scheduled live instruction for the entire period in which it's offered. That's a little different than the way we had it in the past. People came and go, and we're, we're discouraging that. We're also asking families to under, to acknowledge that they understand that their child's expected to submit all of their assignments online, and that they will be held to the same grading standards as students that are learning in person. So there is no special grading policy or exemptions for kids that are learning in the virtual environment. They will be graded and held to the same standard as their, their cohort peers that are learning in, in the in-person environment. We're also asking, as I mentioned earlier, that they understand that their child will stay in that environment for the entire six-week period, and they'll have an option to go back at the end if they choose to do so. And also that they play a really important role in making sure their students are successful if they choose to learn from home. And so we've asked parents to acknowledge that they will work closely with the classroom teacher, and that they will set up a location where their child can learn at home. That's going to be a good learning environment for them. And then, of course, we let, we had them acknowledge that they do have a chance to, we, we, we will reevaluate this every six weeks and have a chance to go back to in-person at the end if they, should they choose to do so. Some of the expectations that we talked about outside of the learning environment is just to ensure they had reliable technology. We do have a process in place for students who are going to be learning in this environment to pick up technology, to have access to Wi-Fi through hotspots in the technology department, and there's a distribution schedule that we've pushed out around that. Also, we wanted to encourage parents to help their children in accessing the content and to really work through it. We know some students, especially older ones, older students tend to navigate the system a little easier, but when you're really, really young, you really need help from mom or dad to help you, especially our Kinder and our primary grades in pre-K. The, outside of going back and forth, the last thing we asked parents to consider or to think about was that their, it's really to think about whether this was the ideal solution for their child. And to help them in making that decision, the team put together what we're calling nine characteristics of what we've found to be a successful learner in the virtual environment. It doesn't necessarily, this is not intended to be used as a screener on our part for the teacher or for the student. It's really more meant for the parent to say, okay, when I think about my child enrolling in virtual, do they have these kinds of qualities or characteristics, or will learning in an environment away from their teacher physically or from the teacher, is that going to be challenging? If so, why? It was simply a way to help parents stop and think about it. So these are just nine characteristics, being resourceful and responsible, being proactive and motivated, being organized, being driven, being willing to take risks, because learning in the virtual environment requires that you speak out or that you talk in an environment that feels kind of different in some situations. We, most kids that tend to be strong in the virtual environment are confident in their learning. They engage a lot quicker. And then, of course, we have students who are self-motivated. They understand to use technology, and then they can communicate well. It doesn't mean we won't cultivate these in students while they're learning in the virtual environment. It's by no means going to keep a student out of the environment. It's just meant to help, like, jog parents' thinking. For students, we ask students that they will be on time, and they actively participate with their camera on, that they're present for all live sessions, that they acknowledge and know that they're going to be held to the same grading standards as their peers, and that they follow the dress code and behavior code of conduct even while they're in a live environment away from the school. We do want parents and families to know that their children will not be eligible to participate in extracurricular activities. There will be no formal art or music or P E outside of the examples that I've mentioned that the teachers may give them while they're learning virtually. And we do want, we do encourage the parents to sit down and talk to their kids about these nine characteristics. Not, it just, if there are a couple that the student may need to work on developing, maybe they set some goals with each other about how they can use this environment to build those things. This is an example of the draft synchronous learning schedule. The idea around this is just to give really you, you and families that are listening an idea about how much time is really being spent in different instructional blocks. I will say, while I'm articulating Kinder on here, pre-K looks a little bit different. It's the same number of minutes for Kinder, but pre-K blocks around math and literacy and social emotional learning and all those things, it's a lot, they're, they're smaller, and they're kind of mixed out. So we do have a schedule specifically that we'll articulate to pre-K families, but this gives you just basically a general idea, and they do follow the minutes that were published by T E A and earlier in the year. You will note at the bottom of the synchronous learning schedule that we are building in compliance with House Bill 4545. As we've talked about in the past, this is a difficult law. There isn't a single district that's figured it out yet. But what we do know is that there, we, we are asking teachers to build in time to do tutoring and to work with kids in small groups outside of these blocks, because the school day is longer than what you see on here, and so there is time built in for teachers to actually engage with those students during the day outside of their planning period and their actual duty-free lunch. The other thing that we wanted to hold up is that we know that kids that learn in this environment, there is an emotional cost to it. We do recognize that. We've seen that, and I think that's been pretty clear. And so what we're, we want to do is make sure the, the social emotional learning component is embedded into their experience as much as possible. So we will be encouraging teachers in their training to launch their classrooms every day with some way of connecting their group with each other, so they're building relationships with their cohort that's on the, on the, on the actual Zoom call. We are going to be identifying counselors that will provide guidance. So for example, it's very typical for a counselor to provide guidance to a classroom of students once a month. So we will, we will identify counselors that will zoom in and actually provide a guidance lesson to a group of students while they're in this scenario. There's also opportunities for individual planning or accounts, connection with your own counselor, should you have that need. So on our website, there's a, there's a, a landing page in the counseling where you can actually click on this button. It'll email your counselor directly that you are enrolled, connected to, and you can engage with that counselor. We want to encourage if there's a crisis that you work with your counselor at least a couple of times, but if for some reason you, you require responsive services outside of what a typical guidance counselor would offer you, there are options. And one of them is the care clinic. So we have hired our staff, so we are staffed up for the fall. It will be located at Sam Houston High School this year. We are accepting referrals beginning on August 23rd, and we will begin services on September 1st. And so students who have a need, and teachers frankly, who have a need for individual therapeutic counseling, will have access to the care clinic in the fall, and we are continuing to evaluate the volume of need against the number of people that are hired to provide the service so that we can increase it if necessary. So one of the things we did outside of just listening from students and families is teachers, which teachers are interested in teaching in this environment. And so we set, set out a, a survey, and we had a, a response, which I'll share with you the numbers in just a minute. But basically, the idea is that we wanted to know which teachers were interested in teaching at which grade levels, which grade levels they're currently teaching, which ones they're certified to teach, so we can start matching. And so we, we, our intention is to select interested staff based upon some evidence that they're successful in the virtual environment. So one of the things that we're doing is collaborating with the Office of School Leadership, where any teacher that actually solicits or says, I'm interested in teaching, we will make contact with their supervisor to have a conversation about whether it's an ideal environment or whether it's ideal for the campus that they're actually coming from, meaning there are some situations where you wouldn't necessarily want to pull a teacher, because it just creates another void that you had to fill somewhere else. We are trying to put as much effort possible as to minimize as many disruptions as possible. We do know that when we pull a teacher for a virtual environment, you're creating a space where students that were learning from that teacher face-to-face are now getting a new teacher in front of them. And there is a possibility at the end that that virtual teacher may possibly end up going back to that group. It's very similar to like a long-term sub. We're going to try to minimize those scenarios as much as possible, but we do know that's a possibility. We are assigning teachers to groups based upon certification requirements, so you have to be certified to teach the students, and we also want to try to balance their workload. And we also want to try to balance their workload. So, one of the most difficult challenges when it comes to a synchronous learning environment is that you're trying to have one teacher serve students from multiple sites. Well, the way our, our technology works in this, and other systems have had this problem, is when you link a teacher to student groups, it's based on where their location is in teams and PMS. And so, what we're trying to do is prevent or minimize the number of grade books, for example, that a teacher has to manage. So, the way that we're going to do that is we're going to try to isolate one teacher to only a certain number of campuses, which may create some scenarios. We have smaller class sizes than others. But it tries to balance the need between serving students and making sure we're not asking teachers to navigate 15 grade books just because that's the way the systems are kind of set up in terms of identifying students and linking them to teachers. Trying to work on a solution to that, still kind of navigating it, but right now, it's trying to narrow who they're serving. We will provide professional learning, so while students are in asynchronous learning, next week, we will identify staff and the following week, they'll be in, they'll have two days of training. We have one half-day where we'll be providing them with synchronous learning, where we're training them face-to-face, and there's another, there's some asynchronous components to it. We're also going to try to, we want to, we will continue to support teachers along the way. When they provide instructions to the students, they'll be providing it from a classroom in Arlington. It won't be from home. They'll be actually in a classroom here. And we've asked teachers that if they sign up for this, that they sign up for, that they at least commit to a minimum of 12 weeks. We don't know if we're going to be doing this 12 weeks, but we do want teachers to commit to at least 12 weeks so that we're not constantly shuffling kids in and out. Now, when we, when we learn in a virtual environment, there is, there's materials that are needed. So, we are creating a schedule, just as we have in the past, where there will be a distribution of their instructional materials, like their textbooks and their technology. They can come pick that up. And we also are working on a solution to provide meals to kids that may need it. This is currently what our numbers, they're a little bit different. As of this evening, we had 1,600 students that enrolled or that are, that have enrolled so far. And then, we have 93 teachers. This was taken at noon, so it's a little bit more. I would say our enrollment is kind of steady now, about right now, and same with our teachers. One thing that we, I will say too, is as we look at these grade levels across schools, they're, they're pretty even with each other across all parts of town. If I was to give you a really, really rough number, it sits somewhere around 30, 25, 30, 35 per school. We have some schools, one on the east side of town that's at 65, that kids that, that they were doing, they were asking. We have one school that has like 14. But generally speaking, it's all hovering around 30 kids is pretty much where we're at. When it comes to the cost, it's not cheap. So, these students are not funded, we do not receive ADA for any students that enroll in a virtual environment. So, we lose the ADA. The cost for this is approximately $1.4 million every six weeks for every thousand students who enroll in our system. So, what we're going to do is monitor this process. And if we have to, we do have access to S R 3 funds that we, and S R 2 funds that we can repurpose to help fund this if we find that as a need. The thing that's important to note is because those funds have already been purposed to something else, something would have to change to make that available. But it's important to note what the cost actually is, which the district would be absorbing. And that's pretty much where we're at. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. I have a couple of questions. Is there any limit to the number of students that can apply?
We have not put any caps on it. What we decided to do was have, invite families to enroll and then try to match the teachers to those, those students. Right now, the way that it's panning out is looking like the volume of teachers that are requesting to participate matched the need that we would have at the grade levels. We don't see ourselves currently, if you just look at raw numbers, like I'm interested in third grade, and this is the number of third graders. We seem to have enough teachers in each of those grade levels to serve those that are asking. But that is preliminary because I haven't yet dug into certifications and actually can you and are you allowed, that kind of thing. But generally speaking, we should be okay. But we have not chose to limit it. We wanted to make the option available to any family that felt that it was a need.
Okay, very good. I'll save my comment to the end. We've got some questions. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, President Mays. And Dr. Wertz, thank you and to your team. Once again, pivot, nimble, innovative. If, if this COVID situation hasn't taught our nation, our state leaders that public education is pretty darn good. And our administrators, what we can do, our teachers, what they can do. I don't know what, what would be a better exemplar. It's just phenomenal that in such a short amount of time, you've put something together that doesn't look anything at all like last year. Virtual was a disaster, not as a critique or criticism, just as an observation. Not just this district, everywhere. Nobody liked virtual. The teachers in our district that had to do double duty, I'm very pleased to hear that these are dedicated educators for virtual. And I really like the, the attributes that you've laid out. I have, so a couple of questions on that. One is, do you see this, and maybe it was just a little tiny bit easier, but not really, for you to stand this up so quickly because we had been exploring virtual as a choice option, should the state have approved the legislative bill supporting that and the payment for that. Do you see this model as, probably not necessarily the model, but as a precursor to what would be a rigorous virtual academy opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, it was a synchronous environment that we were planning for. The characteristics that you saw tonight actually came from the task force that planned for that back in June. So, there were some elements that we were able to pull out that, from the thinking that we've done in advance. It was a lot more robust in June because we were looking at it, we were looking at all sorts of courses.
Yeah.
But it has a very similar kind of feel, which is it's dedicated teachers, teaching specific courses, like professional learning that's designed to teach in that environment. One of the things that I didn't mention that teachers will have access to is there is training. It's not very engaging. It's not our training. It's just training. There's a specific type of training that you can get, which allows you to be certified, you know, as a quasi, almost like badging to be an effective virtual teacher. We're going to make that available to them should they want to dig into it. We have all this other training that we're going to provide, but that's the intent. The intent was to try to lift up high-quality virtual learning with teachers who wanted to teach in that environment. So, we're, it's not exactly, but it's, it's getting closer to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's what I meant by precursor. That's good. And it's, it's absolutely necessary to not have the, the flexibility for families to pop in and out. That's, that's going to make a big difference just that by itself. Regarding the, the technology connectivity issues, I know that we had so many hotspots and so many devices that were sent out last year. I, I don't know that we've gotten the information on how many of those we actually got back. Our, as far as our inventory, are, are we good? And do we have enough balance if things did go missing? Which I'm sure we have a discussion about, to support the technology for those that are in person as well.
Yeah, so we definitely have enough devices that, to go out. In fact, Mr. Upchurch is working with his team to make some swaps at some campuses to make sure there's adequate numbers that are sitting there available for people who are learning in person and that the right device is sitting with students as they're going home. In terms of hotspots, we, we are okay. There was funding for us to secure about 2,000 additional hotspots. So, beginning of September, we should have those available too, so that families who are in need of a hotspot or wifi can make a request and there'll be a process for that so that they can have access to wifi.
Okay, excellent. And yeah, as far as funding, I, yeah, the S R funding, it's there. It's, it's a, it's a tool, absolutely. So, I'm glad that we have it available to be able to do that because, you know, there's, there's talk and, and I would hope optimistically, cautiously, to say probability that will be funded by the state, but that remains to be seen. So, I'm glad if, if that doesn't occur, that, that we're not pulling into fund balance and that type of thing to jeopardize that. So, thank you for that. I want to just comment on the meals. Thank you for that consideration. Just as this pandemic began, it was about getting these kids fed and keeping them fed. And we know that the vast majority, I would think, of these kids are going to be in that high-need demographic. And I, I asked this question earlier in our earlier session about that I believe that at this point, there's one location and that is going to be geocentered as much as possible to the majority of the, the virtual students, if that turns out to be a thing. And this might not be your purview, but I just want to put it out there that I, I just commend everybody for thinking the, the complete student, the complete picture there. Because the social emotional is excellent. Keeping, keeping those babies with full tummies, those two things right there is what moves the needle. It's, you've heard me say it a thousand times up here. So, I appreciate that. With the whole student, I guess, the final thing is, is there going to be also recommendations built into the lessons or to the daily opportunities for children on their own for physical activity, physical education? How does that play in so that they can still stay physically fit at home in their home environment?
Right, so in the asynchronous environment, where you see suggested activities, we'll be uploading activities that they could do to be, to exercise. Of course, it's asynchronous, so they, the parents can choose.
Yeah.
In a synchronous environment, when we train teachers, what we're going to do is provide them with also activities that they can then embed in their lessons. We are required by law, when you're an enrolled student, which I think is important to distinguish, these students are technically enrolled in membership, but because ADA is in there, it's a little different.
Yeah.
But we're still operating as if everything is the same. And so, there is 135-minute requirement of rigorous physical activity. And so, we'll be working with classroom teachers to make those assignments to their students in the synchronous environment. We're not expecting a teacher to do jumping jacks on camera with their kids, but to say, hey, today, why don't you go on a walk with your mom or your dad or make an assignment, and then we'll, we'll grade on, you know, participation and things like that. So, there is some intent to try to encourage physical activity to the best of our ability while they're in a virtual environment.
Good, good, yeah. Social, emotional, physical well-being, that's all key to our achievement equation. So, well, thank you very much. I, I do appreciate you standing this up so quickly. I do think it is a necessary option in the absence of other things that people are legitimately concerned. And I don't, I don't have any negative feelings, disrespect towards them. If some people have trepidation, some people have absolute fear, and others have, in addition or separate from that, reasons for concern for their family members, immunocompromised, et cetera. So, for that, again, as I said earlier, for that population, our pre-K to 11-year-olds that don't have the option, and here, we're doing the entire pre-K through six. I, I think that's, that's the least at this point that we can do. I know it's a lot of work. And what you've described for people that are listening, this is so just a cursory overview of the heavy lift that you are developing. So, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you, Dr. Wertz, for doing this for our, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Wertz, this is fantastic. Thank you and your team for putting all of this together and giving options for people and training the teachers and giving time for the students to get used to it. I think I know the answer to this, but you talked about providing technology and internet and those, the hotspots. The internet will be free to those families, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. All right. And then, I wanted to know, do you think there will be a time where maybe we could offer the virtual learning to seven through 12?
So, that's, there's, it just depends on how things are going. It's, it's a, if there is a stronger complication in seven through 12, then I'll just, I'll articulate one challenge around it. In high school, there are literally hundreds of courses, and the variance in schedules by student is extensive. The reason why it's possible at elementary, and our rationale for doing it is not because of this reason. It's because of the fact that there's a challenge. They can't even be vaccinated. But the reason why it's, it's able to be lifted up even in elementary with a little more ease is because it, a teacher can be a self-contained teacher, or they might teach one content area and we can start linking kids together. If you all were in high school, as you know, you all would have very different schedules and maybe take completely different courses. And if you have all these one-offs, who, one person wants to take, you know, a CTE class and other ones, it starts to become very challenging. So, in high school, even to answer Dr. Raish's question, when we were initially planning for something that was going to be funded, if it was legislation made it allowed, there was a, what I would call a, a skeleton graduation plan that a, that a student could choose to follow, if they want to do completely virtual, or they could select only specific courses as virtual and others were going to have to be face-to-face. We were not offering every class virtual. And so, that's the challenge around this scenario, is if we ever go to high school, it would for students in some situations, many possibly, to have to alter their schedule and pick a completely different course because it's simply not able to be taught in a virtual environment by the sheer type of course it is, the number of students that are enrolled in it and things like that. So, maybe, is that a good answer?
Well, and I, and I know, I kind of disagree with Dr. Raish a little bit, that it was a disaster and that people didn't like it, because I think there were, yeah. But there were families that, that did like the virtual. And I've heard from a lot of teachers and families that say, you know, my, my child did better virtually than they've ever done face-to-face, and we would love the option to have a, a virtual school for the older kids as well.
Well, we, we've always thought that that's ideal. The way we thought about it in the past was that it was, when we were planning it before is, we, we've always been in Arlington, whatever your pathway, the way that you want to learn, we want to provide it for you. But it does take a lot of planning, specifically in high school, because we call them almost like, it's almost like an à la carte scenario. You can, when you go to a university, you know, this TCC, I enroll in a class and then I pick how I want to learn. I decide if I want to do an online class or if I want to do a face-to-face class, similar in the high school experience, but not every class has both options. And so, that's the challenge. So, if you, if we ever went to a virtual environment as a response to a COVID scenario, most likely, people who chose that would have to alter their schedules.
Could we do something like having the basic courses taught synchronously and then asynchronously? Those kind of offshoot courses, where they'd have to do that on their own?
We could think about, we haven't had a lot of discussion around that, but it's not something out of the, out of the realm of possibilities.
Okay.
If we found ourselves in that scenario.
I think, I think people already asked the rest of my questions, so I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. Bemora?
Thank you so much. This is no easy feat, and we are not the only school district pursuing this option for our, our children who are too young to receive the vaccine. But it is not an easy thing to put together. And from everything you've said and with questions that I've asked Dr. Cavassos before tonight, there is so much thought behind this to kind of build a runway so that we can have a good plan, a good plan that takes flight, starting with that survey. That survey is huge. And it just so happens that the numbers worked out beautifully. And I do want to state, for any parents watching, you have tomorrow as well. It's not too late. It should be in your inbox, but it's so, it's so wonderful that we're offering this for our students who are too young to receive the vaccine. And I also love that it's virtual only. Our teachers deserve to focus on students who are their learners, and our students deserve a teacher who can stay synchronous with them for longer and truly devote their instruction to them. So, that's a game changer. I think that's also why we had a decent amount of teacher interest too. And so, I think that that's really the recipe for success, what you've already done. I also appreciate the clear expectations for virtual learners. I think that, you know, you learn as you go, and that's something that last year was just a little bit inconsistent from campus to campus, and we're all figuring this out for the first time. Having something that we've built as a district so that teachers can use really kind of, again, lays the foundation for expectations because it's hard to learn at home, especially for our young ones. And so, those expectations, I think, will be a game changer as well and help our students be accountable for their own learning. be accountable for their own learning. So thank you. I know that that was, again, very quickly put together, very quickly put together, but yet so thoughtfully put together. I also really love the big, clear help button for live help. I mean, that wouldn't just be helpful to me on Canvas, but just in life, you know? Just help button. And I know that you guys will have ample training for teachers. My question is, this is still slightly different from what the virtual, from what our teachers did last year, they'll be synchronous with their students for longer, which is good, but it's different. So will our teachers be able to access live help as well if needed, or at least help that same day from a person instead of, you know, a training?
Yes, we'll make sure there are staff available that they can connect with. There'll also be administration that'll be specifically assigned to support teachers in the virtual environment. So even though they might be working at a school, that may or may not be their homeschool, there'll be another person that's specifically dedicated to supporting them in the classroom.
Wonderful.
So, yes, we're working through that.
Wonderful. And again, the key here is choice. We're giving choices to families with children who are too young to receive the COVID vaccine. This is innovative, it's thoughtfully prepared. Yes, there will be bumps in the road, but it's optional. And getting that teacher interest, I think, is key. There are many teachers in our district that this is their gift. This is their gift. And even though it is temporary, it's wonderful that we have professionals in our district that can continue reaching students through a screen. Teachers can do anything. And I'm just really excited to see the continued innovation, starting with the plan and then taking fruition to our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And I'm going to sound repetitive to my other colleagues, because I would say, man, if we were stuck a year and a half ago and we were told we were going to go through the most tumultuous time in education history, who would you pick to be on your dream team to navigate you through it? There's no question I would pick this team. Because you've demonstrated over, and I know I'm echoing what Ms. McMorrow and Mr. Reich said, you guys have proven over and over, since we were hitting the head with this a year and a half ago, the amazing detail of planning and analyzing and pulling together at a moment's notice and putting such a comprehensive plan together. I don't know how you did it over and over and over and over again. This is just one more example of that. So I want to say thank you to the entire staff for the phenomenal job that went into not just this, but the whole time we've been in the pandemic, and you've had to scramble at a moment's notice. And I'm impressed. This is taking and throwing out all the things that everyone didn't like and we know didn't work, and met the challenge of parents that are really concerned, especially because those kids can't get the vaccine in these grades. And I think you've, it looks like you're standing up a great program. The fact that it gets a check of approval from my colleague, Ms. McMorrow, says a whole lot. So, my question to you is this. As late as this morning afternoon-ish, I was still getting calls from parents of children in this age group who were not aware that we were doing this. They've got one more day, and I understand the complexity, so we can't extend the date. But what are we doing between now and 5:00 tomorrow at a campus level, at a district level, to pull out all the stops from a communication standpoint? Are we doing email blasts, robo-calls, announcements at the campus, sending things home in the kids' backpacks? What's our communication plan for the next 24 hours?
So.
Not 24 hours, next 12 hours.
Well, we did talk about that. We are going to re-notify all the families again and make sure that everyone has that information. I'm sure that, I'm sure that Anita's going to do many of the things that you talked about. I don't know the specifics.
She's also on the dream team, by the way.
She is. But we did, all the families got the initial email, we're going to send that out again. It is, it will be posted. Our goal is to make sure everyone knows that it's an option. We're not trying to, we're not trying to not make sure everybody knows. We're also not trying to encourage one way or the other. We're not intentionally trying to pull kids from school to the virtual environment. We're literally offering as an option for families who are already piqued and interested because they feel like they need it. We're not, we're not trying to encourage people to leave school if that's where their heart really is. So it's kind of striking that balance between making sure that the information is completely there and we're sending it out, but we're not trying to solicit people to leave school to come to the virtual environment. That's not our goal.
Yeah. No, and I agree 100% with that. And maybe I was being a little too ambitious in my checklist here.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah, we do have to strike that balance.
Yeah.
And that's key, because we all know the best place for those students are in the classroom, learning face-to-face. And that's why it's imperative that we do everything we can to make that possible. But there are legitimate concerns by parents, and I'm glad we're providing this option, as are most all of our peers. So, yes. And I think my colleagues have said enough, and it looks great. I could ask a million questions, but I won't.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mr. Chapa, do you have any comments?
I do, President Mays, if I may. Dr. Wertz, I mean, I could reiterate all the comments that my colleagues made. I mean, this is an option that families in our district have been asking for, and we're providing it to them. And so, and doing it on an extremely tight timeline, I don't think folks appreciate how much has been changing from day to day, and that really, it was questionable whether or not we could even offer this type of option until relatively recently. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. The only comment that I have is, I really do hope that there is a way to accommodate families who are not, don't show their intent to do the virtual option by 5:00 tomorrow. You know, based on the slide that was presented, the intent notification went out on the 17th, which was two days ago, and then we're going to have the cutoff be tomorrow at 5:00. And I know that Ms. Foster and staff are making great efforts to try to reach parents on this, but, you know, it's not just the folks who've already indicated an intent that need to be reminded or completed a survey that needed to be reminded, because I do think there's some confusion in the community over whether or not this is a survey or if it is the way to indicate intent. But I think we know that there are different segments of our community that we just got to make a lot greater effort to make good communication with. And, you know, we've been messaging registration for months, and our numbers look really good, but we still have, you know, thousands of students who are expected to trickle in before Labor Day, or thereabouts, who just haven't registered yet. And so I think whatever can be done, and I know that it will be programmatically very hard and difficult to do, but whatever we can do to get this off the ground as fast as possible, but also have a bit of a tail window to let folks still get in who may just not have had, for whatever reason, the opportunity to learn of this yet. And so I would encourage the district to keep looking for opportunities to do that.
And Mr. Chapa, I think that's a, that's a good point. This is something we're rolling out. I think the volume of interest so far gives us a good indication that the word is out. But I also know that, as Mr. Hogg often mentions, do we have room for some exceptions and things as we roll into something new? And so we have talked about that, to have some room for some exceptions. But just to be clear, if there's a staffing availability, if there's room in a class section, if there's an extenuating circumstance, I think we're certainly going to be open to those cases. I can't guarantee that everyone after 5:00 tomorrow is going to get in. But what we can commit to is looking at those cases and making sure that we try our very best to meet the needs of our students, because ultimately, that's what we're trying to do, and try to take those on a case-by-case basis.
That's really good to hear, and I know where everybody's heart is on this, and I just appreciate that commitment, Dr. Cavassos.
Absolutely. And while I have just a second, I would also, a little deeper into the organization, because I think it's important. This is like staffing a school. And so I want to point out Mark Strand, who typically doesn't want to be pointed out in anything, but he is responsible, as with a lot of members of the team, Dr. Buell, Dr. McDonald, others, but he's responsible for helping us staff and surplus and level classes and things like that. So, Mark, just a thank you ahead of time, because that's about as much as you're going to get, is a thank you, right? But a thank you ahead of time, because he's going to staff this school, and we're looking at a school of about, you know, 1,600 students, which is not easy to staff when you have surplus and teachers that generated interest and certifications that have to be looked at. So everything Dr. Wertz described about staffing the school is pretty much Mark and the HR team. So I have to point them out, because that's a big task. So thank you, Mark. And that's it. I'll go back.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Chapa, are you, do you have some more discussion?
No, President Mays, I do not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Will Banks?
Miss, thank you, President Mays. I'm prepared to make a motion, but I believe my colleague, Ms. Fowler, would like to make, has another question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. So did I hear you right, that students that are in the virtual are not allowed in the extracurricular activities?
That's correct. And the reason being is because, the reason you're virtual is because you're avoiding contact. And so in an effort to streamline the expectation, if you can't come to school to learn because you really need to be in a non-contact situation, we, coming into extracurricular kind of defeats that purpose. So we're asking families, if you're okay with contact, come to school. If you're trying to isolate your child out of contact, then you have to do that until your six weeks are up, and then you're welcome to come back if you want.
Okay. Makes sense.
And just to be clear, Ms. Fowler, that there aren't a lot of extracurricular, pre-K through six.
That's true.
So it's not like.
Very little.
UIL and things like that.
Okay.
So just to be clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. McMorrow?
Oh, I just wanted to quickly note that music, movement, and even art, our elementary teachers, especially the ones that are gifted at virtual instruction, they will incorporate this into their content. And so I've seen it firsthand as a parent. Again, teachers could do anything. So I have faith, I have full faith that this will be embedded, and I don't think that this is any reason to, you know, think that virtual instruction is ignoring specials, ignoring the arts. So, again, thank you for all your work, and thank you for the questions.
Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow. Dr. Wertz, I just wanted to note, if we're not going to mandate masks, if we're not receiving funding for doing virtual, I appreciate the district for trying to find some additional means for the many, many families in this district that are still concerned with their students coming to school. I also appreciate the fact that this thought had already been prepared mentally, because we weren't going to vote until this evening, which for many families that were waiting to see what the vote would be, that now want this option, who were not interested in being in a school environment not masked, I hope that that information does get to those families before 5:00 tomorrow, so that they have this option if they so choose. The training, I remember last year hearing from many teachers that said, oh my gosh, Keisha, I would fire myself. I cannot do this virtual thing. I really appreciate the training, because the more that we equip them, the more confident they are, the better they're going to be for their students. So really appreciate taking the time out to make sure that they get the right training to be successful teaching virtually. Okay, those are my only comments. I don't see anyone else. Mr. Will Banks, would you like to make a motion at this time?
Yes. I wholeheartedly move to approve the temporary virtual learning option for pre-kindergarten through sixth-grade students as presented tonight.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote, starting with Dr. Reich.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Booey Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Okay. All present vote in the affirmative, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Okay, next on our agenda is we have items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Do we have any trustees with items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Tonight, we will be considering the items that are listed on your agenda under consent items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and Ms. Moss has a brief statement.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. We have two bids for your consideration, and we have eight items over the $50,000 amount for your consideration, and administration that recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mr. Will Banks?
Accept consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Dr. Reich?
Vote yes.
I vote yes.
Melanie Fowler, I vote yes.
Booey Hogg, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMorrow, yes.
Vote yes.
Okay, all present vote in the affirmative, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Moss. Okay, now we continue with our discussion item tonight, which is our 2019 bond program update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And as we do often, we bring a bond update to the board. There's a lot of moving pieces with this and a lot of great work that's happening in our facilities. And Mr. Horn is prepared to give us a brief presentation, an efficient presentation, about our bond projects, because there's a lot of detail here. So, Mr. Horn?
Certainly. Good evening, President Mays, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos said I will be brief. I know it's late. And you've seen a lot of this before, so I have some really good information, though. It's really good news that I'll share with you. So let's just jump right into, you know our numbers. I won't read all this to you, but our total bond program is approximately $966 million. And this slide is up to date after issuance of bonds in February. We now have issued bonds for Phase 1 and Phase 2. And so I'll just draw your attention to the number at the bottom of the total, far left, $505 million and a bit. That amount represents a little over half of what we, what we plan to issue total. The reason why so much in the beginning, obviously, is we have a lot of our new schools, significant projects in the very front end of this, and then the back end typically is loaded with renovation work and that sort of thing, which are smaller projects, a larger number of them, but smaller projects. Then I have a couple of slides in here relative to each of the various groups. This is, just represents what we've done in facilities so far. The numbers primarily represent Phase 1 projects. So we've sold the bonds, but we're still in planning on a great number of projects. And a few slides after this will show you how that lays out. At this point, we do have 36 total projects in some form or another of planning, design, bidding, and even in construction, and a couple in closeout. So we just had our recent CBOC meeting at the Food Nutrition Service Center, and had a chance to share that with the CBOC committee, and I think that went really well, and we're really proud for David and what he's able to do for our students relative to serving meals and so forth. And then also, that other project that you see there is our enterprise building, which will be our new administration building. So the project is substantially complete. We're making a few last modifications, and furniture began arriving Tuesday. So we'll continue to receive shipments of furniture over the entire month of September, as in the very last little bits of furniture, we'll finish up at the end of the month. And we still plan to begin moving in, in phases beginning in October. So we're real excited about where we're at, and this number will continue, like you saw in the last bond program, to grow and grow and grow, especially as we get into Phase 3, 4, and 5. I have, this slide represents just the Phase 1 projects, just to give you an idea of where they're at in that group. Of course, I mentioned the closeout projects, the new administration building and the Food and Nutrition Service Center. The Barry and Martin projects actually will be going out to bid within the month, and so we're looking forward to that. The Glastby Field project is a bit behind where we plan to be, and the reason for that is just the involvement of what's going on there. We're working with the city. We've employed Jim Maybach to help us with the PD process for zoning. And so we're attacking a couple of things with regard to zoning, one of those being taller light poles or light standards, but we hope to mitigate that by using LED lights, which are much more directional. So that, plus just the height of the press box, the size of the parking element, all those things are things we're working through with the city right now, and so that's a little slower than what we expect. And so that's a little slower than what we expect. But we're, we'll work the schedule out, and we'll try to continue to keep those other projects that are coming behind, such as Sam Houston and Cravens Field, at Lamar, the, I'd say, Wildman Field at Sam Houston and Cravens Field at Lamar. We'll still keep those projects moving as best we can and not let those be impacted by this slowdown. Then some really cool pictures. This is some of what I wanted to share with you. Obviously, you've probably driven by, maybe even been in Gunn. There's some really, really great things happening in those photos. Of course, you can see the exterior facade and how nice that looks. There's still a big portion of that building that will receive new brick and glass around it. That's really the older part, that centerpiece. But you can see the new atrium circulation area that's in that sixth-grade wing addition that we've just completed. And that is where the students are populated currently. So we've moved out of that center portion, the older part of the building, and now the kids are all over in the new wing. And we have a long tunnel, if you've been inside Gunn, that connects the new wing all the way through that construction piece that we're working on now to the new cafeteria and media center. And the media center picture you see right there still shows it under construction, but a lot happened in one weekend, and that media center is now open. So we're really excited about being able to see that. And the really great news that I wanted to share with you is that project is about eight to nine months ahead. So instead of finishing up next summer, we expect to finish up and open that building up for Dr. Varnell and the students in around this December. So that's really exciting news for us. Next slide. Seems to be, there it goes. Okay, and then here is our, the project that we have going on at Crowe. And Crowe is entirely open. You can see the new wing in the top left, and that is primarily a pre-K and kindergarten wing. All the classrooms equipped with, self-contained, with restrooms inside. And then you see the new gymnasium. That represents a marked change for that particular campus and many others that will follow. We had an old metal gym, a metal building gymnasium activity center, if you want to call it that, that really was not conducive to basketball or volleyball or anything else for that matter, other than just maybe jumping jacks and a little movement. But this is a full-size elementary gym, and it serves also as a storm shelter, just like we've built at Jones and like we plan to do at others. So really excited about that, and the principal loves it. You can see the interior of the new classroom wing, and again, what we hope to do over the next few bond programs with our serving lines and our kitchens. This kitchen was completely demolished, and we turned the old kitchen into a new area within the cafeteria. And then this is an entirely new kitchen that was built to the east of that cafeteria. And I think David would tell you, he's very proud of that. It's beautiful. We'll have it open. Probably next week, we're just trying to get our final permits from the food departments. And then Webb, if you've driven by Webb along Cooper, you've seen a huge hole, probably right staring you in the face. That huge hole is where we plan to install all those yellow clamshell devices that you see out there. That's where we'll store all the water, the storm water underneath the site, and dissipate that slowly after a storm. But then there's a lot going on behind that. You can see in this picture just an example of the foundation that's being constructed, the grade beam installation and so forth. That building will be, will have a void underneath it, like many of our buildings do. That just gives us, from a maintenance standpoint, the ability to work under it and manage our plumbing. And then I mentioned the Food Nutrition Service Center. This is just a final photo of the exterior, the new parking, the new brick facade around the building. And then, of course, the very cold new freezer. We had a chance to go in that, Ms. Fowler, the other day, and you don't want to be in there too long. So it's very cold. And then some pictures of our new administration building. You can see just a perspective there from the, that sign is off of Center Street, looking kind of to the north and east. And it doesn't show the picture, the lettering on the face of the building, but you can see that very well from I-30 announcing Arlington Independent School District. You see a picture of your new, brand-new boardroom, and it is completely finished, with the exception of hanging a few devices for technology. But all the cameras and all of your devices are on the board dais now. And so we're real excited about that and the potential use in the future. And then you can see the new lobby entrance where we would have our reception. Then I've showed you some of these before, but these are some updated photos of some of our other playgrounds that have recently finished. In the Phase One playground projects, we only have four that are still being worked on, and they're in their final phases. The one that's the furthest behind, if you will, or at the end, is Cory. We made some changes at Cory earlier in the summer, but we pushed really hard to try to finish that one up. And we'll have Cory hopefully finished and open by the end of next week. And then these are not always the most glamorous things, but if you know the inside of Shackelford Junior High School, you'll remember the temporary walls that were kind of constructed just to make an open campus, a closed classroom campus. So we've gone through there and put all new ceilings and lighting, LED lighting within the space. And so it's really brightened it up, but we've put permanent walls in place now to close those classrooms off, so that they're a little more soundproof from the hallways and things like that. And then just, we've made some simple changes at Jones, one of which is a new concrete drive out front. Like a lot of our campuses, we just had old, old asphalt drives that were tired and ready to be replaced. So that was kind of one of the last pieces that we needed to change at Jones. And then also, the significant change at Jones is we're making the kitchen a little larger for David to be able to serve more students, after we added that 10-classroom wing and the new gym at Jones in the previous bond program. And then just a few quick photos to show you that we are working on the new schools in East Arlington. This is the rendering of Barry. This particular project will bid in about three weeks. And then you have the Thornton project, which has already bid, and it came in under budget. I'll talk more about the demolition and so forth for those schools here in just a bit. And then a couple of small little projects. As we go along through the bond, we tend to have what we call pullout projects, projects that are just in need to be brought forward, because the need becomes so great. And we had two playground, or pardon me, two patio, art patios or pre-K patios at Ashworth and Johns that were in really bad shape. And so we pulled those forward to complete those early, and so we have a photo of what those look like now. And if you did see the old ones, you would know that this is a huge improvement. And so again, I mentioned I would kind of break down the other phases. So in Phase Two, you can see that we're primarily in planning and design. The playground replacements will actually go out to bid next week for Phase Two. And then we plan to have those, those particular projects issued to the contractors in October. We'll bring that back to you for approval. And then we'll work through the rest of the year and next summer to finish those, for those playgrounds. And that'll be a 16 playground package. And then we have the Phase Three projects. All of this, you just recently approved the architects for Phase Three. So I'm working with our legal counsel to establish contracts right now. I should have all of that done in about two weeks. And the Playground Replacements Project is in design. That's already been let and approved in previous meetings. And then our Phase Four projects, all of those are pending projects. Again, some of those projects will have some of the pieces pulled forward, maybe a marquee replacement or things like that. But we are moving forward with their playground replacements, even if they're an elementary school in Phase Four or Phase Five. And then our Phase Five projects, you can see we have a great number of projects in the back end, but they're a lot smaller. Those are mostly our newer schools. And so their needs were less, perhaps in some cases, and they could afford to be at the back end of the bond program, unlike some of our older schools. And again, another really good piece of good news, our hub participation. Through Phases One through Three, you can see that our Tier Two participation commitment percentage is at 22%. And I'm proud to say that we've eclipsed 30% on our hub participation to bet over 33%. And that'll probably go up and down a little bit, you know, as we go through, but we're continuing to push hub participation and make that a bigger part of what we do every day. And so we're real proud of that number. And then finally, just, I'll just touch on the other parts of this, because they're important. And I know the other groups will probably be doing presentations for their area. But in Fine Arts, I can tell you that, from our CBOC meeting the other night, Dr. Anderson mentioned that while COVID kind of pushed things back a little bit, they are accelerating their purchases to catch back up for what they couldn't do, what they couldn't receive during that year and a half period. And so he expects to be fully caught up with Year One and Year Two within just a matter of a few short months. And then the same with Safety, Security, and Technology. I've spoken with Mr. Upchurch, and of course, he presented to us the other night that they're right on target. They've finished all of Year One, and they're working quickly to move into Year Two and procure all of their devices, so they can do a complete refresh of the devices for all students. And then in Transportation, there's, Mr. Collins shared with us the other evening that he's only lacking one unit from the Phase One projects that he had going on, and that's just one of the trucks for maintenance. But he's still moving forward with the other buses and the other maintenance units that he would buy in Phase Two. So we're on track with what we're doing with our spending. And then I'll give you a quick, quick update on our facility relocation. And this will be quick, because most of it's complete. So our design work for Barry and Thornton is complete. I mentioned that earlier. The bidding will be complete within the next two weeks, two to three weeks, I should say. And both those projects, we're accelerating those primarily because we want to take advantage of pricing that's in the availability of resources. And while you may hear that resources are scarce, they are still as scarce. Installation's a six- and seven-month lead time right now, and just installation alone. So, but the manpower is what we want to take advantage of. And we also, by doing this a bit early, we can afford to wait out that lead time for the materials and still open these buildings when we need to open them. So we're targeting a March-to-May opening, which will be much earlier than we planned, but that's okay. We'd rather be open early and having them wait there and be ready for the kids than be opening late. And then the consolidation effort with Barry and Rowark to the Temporary Barry Campus, which is at the old Rowark campus site, that's gone well. And we have the modular building there that was 10-classroom addition with restrooms. It's in place and it's in use right now. We've supplemented that with another portable, typical portable that we use in our district, a two-room portable building. We brought that in as well. That unit's not up and functional yet, but it should be up and ready by Monday. And so, but that just gives them two more classrooms and a little extra space for Principal Raven to work with. But otherwise, though, the campus is operating fine, and we're moving forward. And at the Thornton Campus, which is a temporary campus located at the old Knox site, they're in great shape. Everything is completely operational. Principal Rodriguez has everything she needs, and we're in great shape there, moving forward. And so I'll just show you again, just so you've got an image of where they're at. If you go by that, the Barry Campus, you'll see that that large, very large modular building is located off to the east of the main campus. And then at the Thornton Campus, it's the same place where we had our family intervention program before. And so, the family literacy program, I should say. And so it's in those portables, and we've just, we've completely repurposed those, but new carpet, new paint, new ramps, new walkways, new canopies, everything, so that they're ready to go. And they're using those buildings currently. So, and then I don't have it here, but our family literacy program is fully, is ready to operate at the Morton Campus, where we had a little extra space. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horn. We do have some questions. Start with Mr. Hog.
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. And Mr. Horn, I will keep this brief, because I see the good work you're doing, and I really appreciate it. One thing I'd ask for, and maybe it's not in this, but another format. You know, we get questions of when things are coming, right? Like, everyone wants it right now. And we've been battling that since the dawn of school building. And everyone wants it all done in summertime and Christmas, right? Like, you can't do that. And I know you guys work really hard and bundle things together, because also summertime and Christmas costs us more.
It does, yes.
Projects. So we have to have a balance on those. The one thing, you mentioned summer, early, and listen, in the construction world, summer, early summer, like, right, things happen, we have extra things come up, we have change orders. Is there a way we can get some timing on those and just show it for the future, so we can see, you know, track? And listen, I want to be very clear, just because science is behind, it shouldn't reflect poorly, right? That's what I want to make sure we're not happening on that. But it is good to know where we are, what we're trending, just to give reality when people do ask us. I wish people asked me more questions about student achievement, but people ask me questions about buildings, right? And so it is something like, and that's the only thing I'd make a recommendation for in the future, but otherwise...
We can, we'll be happy to do that. And we typically, as you remember, we provide those large Gantt charts, but we'll get some information that we can put in your hands, and I'll get...
And it doesn't have to be super specific on those, but like, Phase Three, here's our timing of when we expect some of those to give some broader general. Because I'm sure I can go look it up in all of our data we have from the past, but when I see this, I'd like to see Phase Three refresher and reminder when it's coming up. But otherwise, I appreciate it.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hog. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Horn, I don't know how you keep up with all these projects. How many projects have you seen through since you've been in A I S D?
Let's see, in A I S D, this is close to 190 or so.
And you could probably tell us everything about each one of those if we asked.
Probably.
That is just unbelievable. But thank you for all that you do. And I've had the pleasure of going on tours on different things that you have conducted tours in the new buildings, and everything is just top-notch and so well-done. So thank you so much. I don't know how you do it. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. A very good team, I'll put it that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Thank you once again, Mr. Horn. I appreciate all the work that you are doing with so many different projects going on at the same time. I am personally still very excited to see some of the equitable infrastructure that's going on throughout the entire district. There's some really nice things for a lot of the students to be very proud of, and I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you all.
Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Next on the item is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We had one speaker, Ms. Marisol Fritz, asked to speak on a non-agenda item.
Okay.
She actually had the lead for a very early motion. Would it be all right if I took her spot?
That's fine. That's fine. Let me just read our normal protocol. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. May feel free to approach.
President Mays, if I could, since I don't have her registered, I'm sorry, I don't remember everybody's name. If you could remind me of your name and your topic, so I can put it in our minutes.
Mica Wordby, and my topic is HIPAA violations. So that'll be a new one for everybody tonight. Okay, thank you. I'm very sorry that it's this late and we're all still here doing all this, but I appreciate everybody's hard work. I want to just touch on a couple of things that I heard tonight over and over again. So when I say HIPAA violation, I feel like, to some degree, the board is marginalizing the parents who aren't concerned about rushing for vaccines for our children, the parents who aren't concerned about masking our children in school. I actually elected and enrolled my nine-year-old yesterday, a fourth grader, in the virtual platform, not because I'm afraid of sending her to school, but because of what I'm afraid you're gonna make her do in school. Okay? Last year, she suffered a staph infection on her face. She started having anxiety and panic attacks. She couldn't breathe. Her doctor had severe concerns, daily headaches over and over and over. I elected virtual school, because these are my tax dollars. And if the school is gonna do something to my child that I don't agree with, I should have the opportunity for a virtual option. But I do feel, very unrecognized and very marginalized as opinion, that the only consideration for virtual school is the parents or children who are afraid to send their children back. This is perpetuating a fear-mongering in our community that I really don't understand. I lost count at 37 times the reference was made to the children who cannot be vaccinated. What do I, as a parent, interpret from that? What are your goals? If we can't approve and follow the lead of the election of a mask mandate, I won't name members, but if that isn't voted in, what's the next step? My 12-year-old doesn't want to wear a mask, so now she has to be vaccinated in order to attend school? Are we going to follow the colleges across the country in these opinions? This is a public school system. So I have real concerns at those constant references because it leans very contrary to my rights of choice or opinion as a parent. One more second, because the HIPAA violation in Bowles Junior High on the first day of school, and I will be filing a formal complaint, two teachers dared to say to my child and the whole class of students, who, welcome back, everybody, who all got their vaccinations and did the right thing this year? I did. At which every student in the class raised their hands to a yes or a no. I asked, did you get an HPV vaccination when you were thirteen? Have you had an AIDS test? Do I know that you're safe in this room? This is not airborne AIDS. This is a virus. I am old enough, I'll take the compliment if you don't think I am, but I'm old enough to remember that pandemic. I am old enough to remember those conversations and the violation of rights that were discussed at that time. We are now talking about forcing those same overreaches on our children.
I appreciate your conversation. We gave you a little extra time. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I really do. And I would just, please, think about this. The conversation does not always have to lean toward fear. There's a lot of confidence in this community to get through this together. We are not discussing that enough. I appreciate it.
Okay, and then I would also like to add that we did have two comments submitted by two speakers who did not want to speak. So I do want to acknowledge them that we did receive their information, Jaya Davis and Catherine Rogers. Thank you very much. We do have your information to read. Thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this will be a brief report, considering time and everything else. But it is important to note that we did have a back-to-school backpack distribution. Those are just two pictures there. Over ten thousand backpacks were handed out. I thank the five hundred volunteers from our community that helped us distribute the backpacks in just six hours. And it was nice to see so many familiar faces helping us get ready to come back to school and helping our families. And everyone did an awesome job. And I just completely, we're blessed to have so many volunteers and so much donation of time and energy to get our kids ready for for school. So thank you to everyone involved, Aaron Pedales in particular, for leading this effort year after year. He's also one that doesn't like to be pointed out, but we do it anyway. So thank you, Aaron Pedales, if you're still awake and listening. Our staff also was able to get the year going with a convocation, Ignite 2021. And I know it's already been mentioned before, but I just want to thank Anita Foster and her committee and everyone involved in this effort. It was recorded. It was it was a wonderful one take in the recording, one take with minimal editing. I won't tell you what was edited out, but minimal editing. So thank you, Spence, for your efforts. I know Spence is listening intently right now for all the work that's been done. And of course, Bowie High School's principal, Rene Lizardo, for his wonderful videos, and DJ Ray Borden from Seguin High School for his talented playing of music and things like that. The last point that I'd like to make is that these two events helped to start the great first day of school in Arlington ISD. I was able to visit six campuses, starting the day by greeting students and visiting pre-K classrooms at Beben C and ending up at Gunn Junior High Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. We had to an opportunity to visit classrooms and encourage students to have a wonderful year. Students were engaged. I'll point out that picture at Gunn Junior High, that's actually the theater that we just opened area there. And we were in a circle activity with the the teacher introducing and building relationships and all that. And the activity was to share your life story in twenty seconds. And yeah, I know. And I did it in like eighteen seconds, not much to share, I guess. But I did it in eighteen, I had two seconds to spare. The kids were wonderful, and I just appreciate all the staff. So congratulations to all our teachers who started the school year and all our students. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Mrs. Fowler?
Just one more.
Where we can go. So for the the parents and the students that are doing the virtual schooling, there is a a group of retired teachers, AISD teachers, and they work in the Excel Learning Academy. And they're a nonprofit, so I can speak up for them. But they are willing to help students that are might need to have a place to go for virtual learning. Maybe they're young and the parents can't be home with them, or for students that really kind of need somebody there and they're, you know, they follow the mandates and all of that. But they're available for any of these students that are going to choose virtual learning and might need a little bit of extra help. So Excel Learning Academy and their retired AISD teachers. And they're they're housed out of Lake Arlington Baptist Church. That's their their place there on right off a little. So any parents that need extra assistance for their child, they're available to help.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Chapa, do you have anything to add? I don't want to leave you out.
No, I don't, but thank you, President Mays.
You're welcome. Thank you. Welcome back to school. So happy for our teachers to be back in the classroom. I know most of the students were very happy to see their friends. So I am just once again wishing that we have an amazing school year. And to all the teachers that were just so happy to see their their students again, very happy for you. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two will be a good year. I'm going to leave with just one quote, and that is, don't stop when you're tired. You stop when you are done. And we are by no means done. We've got a lot of heavy lifting to do to make sure that we are closing gaps. It's not just all about one thing. We've got many things to make sure that our students are successful, and we need to continue to make sure we're doing that. We still need input and feedback from the community, from our teachers, and from our students included as well. So with that being said, Mrs. Secretary, do we have anything?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. It is eleven fifty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.